Good evening and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, November 10, 2020. In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, council members will be participating in an online city council meeting. The public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. In lieu of in-person attendance, the city is providing alternatives for viewing and participating in city council meetings. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Gabe Letty?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
I'm here.
Seem hi.
Present.
Councilmember Tlantus?
Present.
Vice Mayor Frutos?
Hi, Madam City Clerk and fellow council members. Great to be here with you guys. Good evening.
And Mayor Springer?
Here.
Thank you.
There will be two periods of public comment tonight. One general public comment period for comments on any matter concerning city business except the public hearing item, and one period of public comment for the public hearing item only. If you speak on the public hearing item during the first period of public comment, your comments will not be included in the public hearing record. If you'd like to participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment. Tonight will be a journey in memory of former Burbank Fire Chief Curtis Reynolds, who passed away peacefully in Port Juanimi on September 14, 2020, at the age of 86. Kurt was born in 1933 in tiny Bengal, Oklahoma, to a family of sharecroppers. With the beginning of World War II, Kurt's family moved to Oakland, California, and then to Los Malinos, where Kurt attended high school. Upon graduation, Kurt joined the Navy, serving on a minesweeper in the Mediterranean, and then an icebreaker in Alaska. Completing military service, Kurt returned to California and, in 1958, joined the Burbank Fire Department, working through the ranks to become Fire Chief in 1976. He also earned his BA in Political Science at California State University, Los Angeles. As Fire Chief, Kurt developed the first master plan for the department, resulting in the rebuilding and upgrading of all six fire stations. Kurt desired to provide the Burbank Fire Department with the best equipment, training, and facilities in California. He worked with the Pasadena and Glendale Fire Chiefs to create the Verdugo Communication System, significantly improving response times and coordination between the departments. Kurt was also instrumental in developing a new fire training center and laid the groundwork for a combined police and fire headquarters, the final planning and construction of which was overseen by Kurt's successor, Chief Mike Davis. Kurt represented Los Angeles and Orange Counties on the Board of Directors of the California Fire Chiefs Association and in various national, state, and local fire service organizations. After decades of professional honors, Kurt retired in 1990 with 33 years in the department, including 15 years as Fire Chief. Desiring to be nearer to the ocean, he moved to Port Juanimi, where he met Nancy Henry. Two years later, they were married in Jamaica. Throughout his life, Kurt was an athlete and fitness buff. He was a 95-mile-a-week cyclist, a passionate golfer, a licensed pilot, a skilled sailor, and a long-distance biker on his beloved Harley, on which he enjoyed cruising the coast. Kurt is survived by Nancy, his wife of 24 years, his sons Derek and Byron, brothers Conrad and Bitten, and his sister Linda. Kurt lived a life of service to his country and community. He was a devoted friend, a consummate professional, and a thoughtful visionary leader who was proud of the heroic men with whom he had the honor and privilege of serving. Tonight, City Council remembers Chief Reynolds for his extraordinary contributions to the city of Burbank and conveys our deepest condolences to his family, friends, and colleagues.
Chief Garcia, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, Eric Garcia, Fire Chief. I know this is a most peculiar time, where typically we'd have Chief Reynolds' family here and we'd be able to honor his service to the city. But in lieu of that and the COVID-19 restrictions and so forth, I still would want to pay my respects to the Reynolds family. As you so eloquently stated, Madam Mayor, Chief Reynolds was a true visionary, and he had tremendous pride in the Burbank Fire Department as well as the city of Burbank. We are forever grateful for his leadership and his contributions, and on behalf of the men and women of the Burbank Fire Department, I extend my deepest condolences to the Reynolds family. He will truly be missed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Reynolds, we remember you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
Real quick, I'd just like to say I want to thank Chief Reynolds and his family for hiring me back in 1975.
Great, thank you.
Thank you to Chief Reynolds.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, thank you. We have three announcements this evening. The Community Development Department is hosting an online community workshop on Thursday, November 19, 2020, at 6:00 PM on the Downtown Burbank Transit-Oriented Development Specific Plan. The city will provide an overview of the project and seek community input to create a plan that identifies new goals, policies, guidelines, and standards for future development and improvements in downtown. Residents can watch the workshop live on the Burbank Channel, on Spectrum Channel 6, or AT&amp;T Channel 99, and on the city's YouTube page. You can find out more about the online meeting, how to participate, and the Downtown Burbank TOD specific plan by visiting the project website at downtownburbanktod.com. If you have any questions, contact Senior Planner Leonard Boucher at 818-238-5250. City buildings will be closed in observance of Veterans Day tomorrow, November 11. Things may look a little different this year, but you can still join us in honoring U.S. troops. The Condor Squadron Flyover, sponsored by Cusmano Real Estate Group, will take place at 11:00 AM. Please step outside and look towards the skies of Burbank to salute our veterans. Additionally, the Public Information Office will air a Veterans Day message on the Burbank Channel. Thank you to all who are serving and have served in our military. I'd like to invite City Clerk Mullins to read the last announcement regarding the 2020 election.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's actually just a quick update that I would like to provide for the council and also our community. As some of you may have noticed on our website, the city clerk's webpage, that we are continuously updating the results for the election. And I wanted to bring to everyone's attention that the election is not, the results, the vote that they're being counted by the county is not over yet. It will be finalized and certified by the county on Monday, November 30, when we will have the final outcome of the results. We continue to update our results as we get in from the county, and now we'll be receiving the results every Tuesday and every Friday. So the last update will be made on Monday, 11:30, before we receive the certified records from the county. So we updated today. We got the numbers being posted on the website, and I'm very happy and proud for the involvement of our community. Our voter registration number has gone up, as of October 19, to 73,044. And in comparison to July of 2020, our numbers were 70,367 registered voters. That's a difference of 2,677 registered voters. So I applaud the community and everyone that went out to cast their ballot. For the city council positions, we had 57,618 ballots casted. And for the city treasurer, 57,664. For Measure RC, we had 57,662 ballots casted. So with that, I want to inform everyone that on December 8, we will be coming back to city council to ask for council to certify the election, and that's after the county certifies the election. And followed by that, on December 14, we will have the new elected officials installed at 10 o'clock. And we will be giving oath of office at that time for the new elected officials. That would be city council and city treasurer altogether. So this is just a brief update. I know I've been getting a lot of calls and a lot of emails wondering, when are the results final? Is the election final? It is not. They continue receiving ballots. So the other big, you know, the important question that I get asked like on daily basis is, how many ballots are left? And I did speak with the county just before our meeting, and they honestly cannot give me a number because they still have elections from military overseas to come. It's 17 days from the date of the election. Ballots can arrive. They still have some of the provisional ballots they have not opened, the ones with bad signatures that they had to turn back to get updated signatures. So I'm unable to provide that number at this time. Once they know close to, they will provide it to me. So just stay tuned. We'll get updates. We'll post them, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, I'd like to remind our viewers that if you wish to participate in general public comment, the phone line is open. Please call 818-238-3335 to join the queue. We have two proclamations this evening. The first is in recognition of Burbank Temporary Aid Center Month. Whereas Burbank Temporary Aid Center, or BTAC, was founded in 1974 to assist the homeless and poor in our community, and it has diligently worked for almost 45 years to fulfill its mission with the assistance of businesses, churches, and caring individuals who give of their time and resources. And BTAC provides services including food, utility assistance, lunches, and showers for homeless for thousands of people each year. And BTAC has continued to provide these services during the COVID pandemic, as more and more Burbank households find themselves in need of assistance with food and utility bills. And business Burbank, excuse me, Burbank businesses such as the Brad Corb Real Estate Group, Nickelodeon, Warner Brothers, Sprouts &amp; Pavilions have joined together with Boys and Girls Club of Burbank, Burbank Association of Realtors, Burbank Police Officers Association, and Command Staff, National Charity League, South Pasadena High School, and other organizations to provide food, raise money, and create awareness for Burbank Temporary Aid Center. Now, therefore, I, Sharon Springer, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2020 as Burbank Temporary Aid Center Month in the city of Burbank, and wish them continued success in serving our community for many years to come. I'd like to invite BTAC board member Michael Wahlbrecht to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I look forward to the day of being able to come to a council meeting in person, but until then, I understand. And I want to thank you for supporting BTAC since, I think this is since 2004, we've been doing this. And so very appreciative of that. And we have a short video we'd like to play that I understand is already queued up.
You don't realize how many people need help, how many homeless people there are, how many low-income people there are.
I haven't had a lot of help since I was little, and it's nice to have food and blankets and clothing when it gets cold.
We're very appreciative of the services, and it's really nice to have the necessities.
It takes a lot of humility, but also I think it takes a commitment to your family to be able to say, I need help.
BTAC was founded in 1974, was actually the ministerial association that realized that there was a need for a centralized location for services in the community. We've evolved over the years from being just about food to now we not only have the food pantry, but we have case management. We can help people with their utility bills. We have homeless services now as well.
Well, the case manager is someone that will work with you on your situation and come up with a plan of action of how we are to address the situation.
And the beautiful thing about the case management is that we look at the entire person. And so they may not need help with their utilities, but they may need help just getting a bus pass so that they can go to work, or maybe help with childcare, and we can make referrals to those things.
I'm a single mom, and so I know what it's like to have to need help. And I don't ever want to make a client feel like it's a bad thing to need help. A lot of times, I've told clients, if you have to come here and wear a baseball hat and sunglasses because you, you know, you feel judged, then do that, but come here for the resources if it's going to help you stay housed.
My goal is to be independent, not to use anymore. And that's the agency right here is for.
We're teaching them. We're empowering them, and we're helping build some self-confidence and hope for their future. And those are things that you really can't buy.
Now they're helping us with finding places that will hire us, helping us, we could get our mail here and phone calls just in case we get references.
What we do every day actually has an immediate result. You see the food come in the back door and go out the front door, or the check come in, and then we pay someone's power bill or part of their rent. And that's really fulfilling.
There's a number of homeless people that we have here that are on the streets. But if I can smile at them and give them a hug for the day, I think that's important.
We have, at this time, six staff and about 65 volunteers. If it weren't for our volunteers, BTAC wouldn't be open most of the time.
We give out blankets and backpacks and warm clothing to homeless people who come in here at any time of the year. There is never a day that I leave BTAC that I don't feel good.
We take seriously that people entrust us with their donations, whether it's monetary or food or their time. I just see this wonderful side of service and charity in the community in a way that I don't think a lot of people get to see. And it's wonderful to be in a community like Burbank that has such a commitment to helping others in the community. What does BTAC symbolize? I would say hope.
Thank you for playing that video. I just want to sum up by saying I want to thank the community for all of its assistance throughout the years, and especially our volunteers. As you can imagine, the pandemic has made us all change the way we do things. We've seen probably a 30% rise in caseload at BTAC since the pandemic has begun. And you couple that with things like our volunteers generally, if anybody's been to BTAC lately, you know, our volunteers tend to be those who are retired, who have time to give. Those people, many of them have been hesitant, understandably, to come into a situation where there's lots of people because they themselves don't want to get sick. So it's been very difficult to manage enough volunteers and staff to get everything done. But it's, the doors are open, and people who need help are getting it hopefully. So thank you again for doing BTAC Month, and we look forward to many more years.
Thank you, Mr. Wahlbrecht, for BTAC's efforts to serve the most vulnerable in our community. And thank you very much for joining us this evening.
No problem. Thanks.
Our second proclamation this evening is for the condemnation of prejudice and promotion of inclusivity, equality, and diversity in the city of Burbank. The city of Burbank is a thriving community built upon the fundamentals of people, pride, and progress, whose citizens come from all ages, socioeconomic backgrounds, and ethnicities, and where all deserve to feel safe and welcome regardless of race, sexual orientation, gender identity, origin, creed, abilities, or disabilities. And the city of Burbank recognizes that prejudices such as racism, sexism, ageism, classism, ableism, homophobia, and xenophobia are often based on unfounded social constructs and can result in discrimination and persistent economic, educational, and environmental disparities. And the city of Burbank is actively addressing disparities and promotes equity, inclusion, and diversity in city government, programs, and services. And the city of Burbank seeks to help residents overcome barriers resulting from societal prejudices by, amongst other things, increasing access to learning and information resources through the Burbank Public Library, subsidizing recreational activities and educational classes for low-income residents through the Burbank PASS program, and addressing the needs of those suffering from mental illness and homelessness through the MET evaluation team. And the city of Burbank also recognizes the efforts of other stakeholders in the Burbank community, including the Burbank Unified School District, who through its Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee works to establish an anti-racism policy for Burbank schools. And the city of Burbank acknowledges the trauma of longstanding racial and societal prejudices, and that deep-seated change often begins with youth empowerment. Therefore, the city of Burbank realizes the need to foster an environment for current and future generations of Burbank's youth to feel comfortable to grow, thrive, and be who they are. The city of Burbank seeks to establish a dialogue with the community, most recently exemplifying this commitment in city council's direction to the Burbank Police Department to create a roadmap for community engagement. And the city of Burbank wants to assure all residents of its dedication to preserving and upholding the rights of all persons and commitment to fairness, progress, and accountability. Now, therefore, I, Sharon Springer, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim the city of Burbank as a world-class city, condemns all forms of prejudice, and embraces inclusivity, equality, and diversity. And the city of Burbank will work to progress as an equity and justice-oriented organization. And the city of Burbank will collaborate with community organizations to actively and authentically engage on issues of racism, sexism, ageism, classism, ableism, homophobia, and xenophobia in the community to make Burbank a place that is welcoming to all. Thank you. I'd like to remind our viewers that if you wish to participate in general public comment, the phone line is now open. Please call 818-238-3335 to join the queue. Mr. Hess, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I actually do have something to report. I am excited to introduce our new Burbank Water and Power General Manager, Dawn Roth-Lindell. Before I do, it was a very extensive recruitment, nationwide recruitment, that brought Dawn here, and we are very excited to have her here. I know she is going to be a great fit not only for the organization but also for Burbank. So without further ado, I'd love to introduce Dawn Roth-Lindell, our new General Manager of the utility. And if you could say a few words, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. And this is my first time, so clearly I need to push the button. And so I want to thank you for this opportunity to say a few words. I come to Burbank from the Denver area. I was born and raised in Indiana and Illinois, in part on a farm where I learned the value of hard work and the value of being frugal. I went to the University of Notre Dame and graduated with a degree in chemical engineering, and then to the University of Colorado at Colorado Springs, where I received my master's in business administration. For the last 20 years, I've had the pleasure to serve in both a municipal utility, the Colorado Springs Utilities, serving water, wastewater, gas, and electric service to the citizens of Colorado Springs, and then in a federal utility, the Western Area Power Administration, serving federal power. And Burbank Water and Power is a customer of WAPA, so serving federal power throughout the West. And in my career, I've had the opportunity to not leave a job because I was running from something, but rather to leave a job because I was running to something. And that's the case here. I am so excited to be able to serve alongside the amazing men and women of Burbank Water and Power. In just the two days that I've been able to spend with them, their kindness, their deep caring for this community has come through from person after person, whether they serve in finance, or in water, or in electric generation, or electric distribution and transmission. These are amazing people who are truly committed to this community. I'm excited to learn from them and continue with the mission to deliver sustainable, affordable, reliable, and safe water and power to the city of Burbank.
Thank you very much, and welcome to Burbank. We're delighted to have you.
Go Buffaloes!
We have two presentations to council this evening. First, I'd like to invite Marcia Ramos from the Burbank Human Relations Council to discuss BHRC's outreach and partnerships with the community. Welcome, Ms. Ramos. Bear with us.
My PowerPoint isn't there.
Yes.
While we're waiting, I was just wondering if Zizette, our clerk, was trying to win the Burbank Clerk's Cup with all the registered voters? It's not fair that she challenges those children. Just kidding.
Well, it's interesting that my screen, my... There it is, finally. There it is.
Great, there you go.
Good evening, Mayor Springer, council members, city staff, members of the public, and thank you for your patience. BHRC, the Burbank Human Relations Council, appreciates the invitation to make a presentation. I am Marcia Ramos, longtime member of BHRC. My family joined the Burbank Human Relations Council in 1963 because they were previously denied rental housing due to our ethnic and cultural heritage. I began volunteering with BHRC as a teenager and served as president of BHRC in the mid-'90s. Over the year, BHRC and the community leaders involved made an impact in our city. They improved and enriched our community by consistently advocating for equality and justice. I would not be the person I am today if it were not for BHRC and the extraordinary leaders who mentored me. BHRC is a grassroots, all-volunteer organization with members that range in age from 25 to 95, representing the diversity in our community. This year is like no other. We've seen an increase in awareness of our organization and look forward to engaging members and friends in working together to build a beloved community. History presents a lens that colors our views, and knowledge of history illuminates the path toward the future. So with that in mind, I will begin the presentation by reviewing some significant BHRC historical milestones. I will also review some areas of focus, important partnerships, current and future projects, and finally present some action items for your consideration. Sixty-two years ago, the Burbank Human Relations Council was formed by Burbank residents, people of faith, activists, in response to a violent threat lodged against hard-working blackmen and their employers. The first meeting of BHRC was held on May 13, 1958, in a home on Luge Street, and brought together members of the Brotherhood Committee of the Jewish Center of Burbank and other faith and civic leaders. The BHRC was formed under the guidance of the Los Angeles County Commission on Human Relations, and that affiliation continues to this day. I think it's important to note that BHRC and its members were active in the civil rights movement of the 1960s. In our historical records, we found a copy of the telegram sent to President Kennedy regarding the violence in Alabama, a flyer with Reverend Kenneth Moore of the First United Methodist Church, and president of BHRC at the time, hosting a panel on religion and civil rights. There are several interesting newspaper articles, one of which BHRC asked the city council to issue a statement of policy welcoming all people and their right to live in the city. Other news articles document BHRC's work in support of the Rumsfeld Housing Act. This Hallmark Act was passed in 1963 to help end racial discrimination by property owners and landlords who refused to rent or sell their property to colored people. There was an effort in 1964 to repeal it, and again BHRC hosted a panel attended by more than 300 people, which was a record at that time. And as a sign of BHRC's commitment to the civil rights movement, two members marched in the last leg of the Civil Rights March led by Dr. Martin Luther King from Selma to Montgomery. For six decades, the BHRC has remained steadfast in our commitment to fostering good human relations in our city by promoting equality and understanding through education and action. We have initiated discussion panels, programs, and community engagement projects and provided public policy input. Through the years, we have also hosted interfaith dialogues and panels. Annually, for 35 years, BHRC has presented the annual Holocaust Commemoration at City Hall, and an educational program in the schools, and an interreligious commemoration as well. BHRC has provided opportunities for the community to hear and learn from subject matter experts and city leaders. Years before the National Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday was adopted, BHRC was advocating to the city for the recognition and presented an annual program in the community. We recently revived the MLK Program and have been hosting an "I Have a Dream" MLK Breakfast, which is enthusiastically received. BHRC calls together community in sorrow and in remembrance. And BHRC joins with our community members in building bridges of understanding through action and participation. BHRC receives consulting services from the Los Angeles County Commission on Human Relations and the United States Department of Justice Community Relations Services, also known as America's Peacekeepers. And we maintain affiliations with local, regional civil rights organizations, social service, and human relations organizations. About 25 years ago, the Burbank Human Relations Council and the Burbank Police Department began to work together. We have provided policy input, help with community surveys, and hosted programs to educate and respond to hate incidents and hate crimes. And more recently, BHRC has participated in National Night Out. BHRC has developed a hate crime protocol that involves the Burbank Police Department. In 2018, we were recognized with the John Antonson Ford Award by Supervisor Kathryn Barber for the response model as an effective tool in supporting victims and fostering good human relations. BHRC has been requested to make a presentation on November 18th to the Burbank Police Commission, when we will present more detailed information. But basically, the hate crime response protocol is a communications model with response options to support the victim. Over the years, BHRC is sometimes made aware of a hate incident or crime and reports directly to the County Commission on Human Relations. The commission tracks incidents and crimes throughout the county and issues an annual report. Their 2019 report was just issued about three weeks ago. The county has recently launched a new way to report hate crime or incident by simply dialing 211. The report is confidential and not affiliated with law enforcement. BHRC is participating in meetings to further the work of this effort to combat hate. As part of this effort, BHRC is hosting an exhibition of poster art in recognition of the county-wide United Against Hate Week. We invite students and adults to submit poster art-themed Stand Together Against Hate that will be displayed in the Geo Gallery from November 30th through December 11. Please visit our website for more information, and once the posters are up, look for featured posters on our website and Facebook page. Our sign campaign continues. Perhaps you've seen them throughout the city, and we hope you'll continue to see them. They are free, and we have volunteers that have been delivering them all over. So if anyone that's watching would like one, you can visit our website or simply mail In 2021, BHRC plans to conduct community dialogues, and we hope to do it face-to-face. It's a project long overdue, and we know how impactful they can be. We've initiated dialogues in the past, and our community members enthusiastically engaged. This project was identified in our strategic plan some time ago, and we had to put it on hold just a little bit, but 2021 is when we hope to bring people together. At this time, we are planning and seeking partnerships, and after the planning process, we will conduct facilitator training in consultation with our human relations experts. BHRC has a few action items for you to consider. We hope the city will partner with BHRC in the community dialogues. You may want to consider a public campaign to combat hate. We think it's important for young people to learn about human relations, and we believe there is great value in the adoption of a Sundown Town Resolution. So what would that look like? Partnering with BHRC means having a representative of the community dialogues planning committee, helping with outreach, and hopefully, meeting space. A public campaign to condemn hate could begin with a bumper stickers on the back of city We hope you consider incorporating a section on human relations in the youth leadership program. Good leadership and good human relations go hand in hand. We commend the city on the youth leadership program. It's a great opportunity for our young people to contribute to building a beloved Burbank. BHRC appreciates the proclamation by Mayor Springer this evening. You have stated that the city of Burbank will collaborate with community organizations to actively and authentically engage on issues of racism. We believe that the adoption of a Sundown Resolution is a good and authentic effort to support the proclamation. By understanding and acknowledging the past, Burbank will be more deeply positioned to move forward, empowered with clarity, and working to shape a city and community that is inclusive, safe, and anti-racist. Please know that members of BHRC have researched and personally contacted individuals regarding Burbank's history, along with mayors across the nation and council members next door that have also adopted a Sundown Town Resolution. We have drafted a well-researched sample resolution for your consideration, and your staff has been provided a copy of that. As part of the resolution, we believe that reviewing and assessing city policies, procedures, ordinances, values, goals, missions through an anti-racism lens that foster an unbiased and inclusive environment that is free of discrimination, retaliation, and harassment towards any person or group can have great value. An internal working group could be established. The resolution also includes an action item that invites the community at large to sign on to the resolution. I'm sure there are other actions you can and will take. We look forward to working with you and our community members and building togetherhood in our community. We want you to know that we appreciate the opportunity to engage with you this evening. I do believe it's the first time BHRC has been asked to make a public presentation, so we thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos, for that wonderful presentation. And council members, do you have comments, questions? Yes, Councilmember Gable Letty.
Well, thank you for recognizing me. Mayor Ramos, for many people watching this evening, they may not know that you were a council member and a mayor of Burbank, and you extended what you learned and did through BHRC to your service to our community. I can't tell you how glad I am to hear this presentation tonight, and how important the point that you raised about community dialogue will be going forward. I hope to join you in that effort, even though I'm not serving on council, because I think with the death of George Floyd and others tragically and unnecessarily, and the affront to human dignity is something that we can have a conversation about in our community among our neighbors in order to listen to one another and develop a better understanding going forward on how to make Burbank work the best for everyone. Secondly, I'm just thrilled to see that BHRC has already taken the initiative to research and look at the legacy of Burbank in a manner that is thoughtful and true to the need to recognize our history. So to everyone at BHRC for their work, to you especially for making the presentation tonight and being a leader in this community at a very young age, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for letting the community know more about the work of BHRC here in Burbank. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Gable Letty. Yes, Councilmember Talamontes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ramos, thank you for being here today with us and sharing the historical perspective of BHRC and your involvement in there from pretty much the very beginning, your family at least, and yourself continuing to... You know, it brings a lot of issues to Burbank in regards to, especially in this environment that we're in, the political toxic environment that we're all going through, and then the pandemic on top of that. There's just so many things that have been, so many stresses. There's a lot of stressors that are affecting us on a daily basis. So this could be a ray of sunshine coming forward for the community to discuss issues, to just get it off your chest. I mean, you know, it's one of those things that a lot of people have held inside for many, many years. I've seen the pictures of when Burbank, back in the '60s, late '50s, early '60s, you know, whites here, colors there, right? It doesn't portray the media capital of the world. I hate to see those pictures, but anyway, it was part of history, and if we can move forward with the Sundown Town Resolution, I'm more than happy to move it forward, you know, put it on the agenda for discussion in our future council meeting. Anyway, I want to thank you. I want to thank the members of BHRC and the rest of the community for getting involved, staying engaged, and moving forward in a positive manner. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Frutos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, former Mayor Ramos. This is an important time that we do need the Burbank HRC Committee involved, because Burbank is not the city of LA, because we've got people like you and other members of the Burbank Human Relations Council. I'm a member of it. Councilmember Murphy's a member of it, and I'm very proud to stand united with you. And I think this is an important, pivotal time in our city as we're growing, because we have a lot of new residents that might not know, how would I say, the growing pain... we have a lot of new residents that might not know, how would I say, the growing pains and the successes of our city. So to me, I look at this as an important moment in the next evolution of the city of Burbank, that we reunite our community as one, and we allow people to discuss these very hot topics, but at the same time, it gives us older folks that have been in Burbank for a while to listen to our new residents that are an important part of the fabric of our city. So consider me a partner always, not just as a member, but an active advocate of the importance of bringing human relations issues out in the open for a good quality discussion. But most important, it's really about bringing people together, because there's a reason why we moved to Burbank, there's a reason why we want to raise our families here and support our schools, and thank you for being what I call one of the early pioneers to move our city to where we're at today, but we got to roll up our sleeves, and we got to work that much harder for the next generations behind us to feel that this is their city, and they're going to contribute to the future success of our city. So thank you for an outstanding presentation, Mayor Ramos, and once again, my commitment and my thank you to the members of the Human Relations Council. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor Springer.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we are at a crossover moment, and thank you, Mayor Ramos, for your outstanding presentation, and there's opportunity to move forward here. So, thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Just a few comments.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can hear you, we just can't see you.
Sometimes that's a good thing.
There you are.
I just wanted to say that I like, I like the sample that you have provided. I think it's really exciting that the citizens can sign on to this if they want to. I think we should talk about the Sundown Resolution. I heard for many, many years that we had blue laws, apparently that was a rumor, but there were a lot of activities that we need to recognize and overcome by coming together. It's always fascinating to hear people's stories, the fact that someone wouldn't rent to your family, I think of how that would have affected our community in so many ways, because Dave Ramirez family, I mean, it's meant a lot to this city in terms of our history and our growth. I tell anyone that feels funny about the times we have, about the hate that you hear about, the easiest thing that you can do to make yourself feel better and help somebody else is join BHRC. It's $20 a year to belong to an organization that is inclusive, is interested in your story, and wants to help you, help Burbank to be a place where everybody can live a happy and productive life. So consider that if you are thinking about some action plan, do that. It's not very hard, and we'd love to have you. And thank you very much for the presentation tonight, and I think we should move forward. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I just do a brief response?
Yes.
Again, I do want to thank Emily Gable Luddy, Mayor Luddy, for the invitation. She extended it along with you, Madam Mayor. And my goal in all of this is working with the community. Our goal is working with the community to build togetherhood. There were leaders of BHRC that mentored me. I would like to mentor this new generation, and the way we can do it is by working together. So I look forward to working with the community, I look forward to working with you, we look forward to working with you, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. We'll be in touch. Yes.
Just real quick, just for staff direction and clarification, if a councilperson could at the end of the meeting during additional agenda items, just propose to, or request the various actions listed in the PowerPoint for the city to consider to bring those back, and then we could bring those back and hit the ground running on those.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ramos. Our second presentation is an update from the Valley Economic Alliance regarding collaborations with the city of Burbank and resources for economic development. I'd like to welcome President and CEO of the Valley Economic Alliance, Ms. Sonia Blake, who is joining us this evening. Hi, Ms. Blake. We can't hear you.
Thank you so much for letting me know. Good evening, Mayor Springer, and good evening also to Vice Mayor Frutos and Councilmember Murphy, who we're very pleased to participate with us on our board, the entire city council, city staff, the businesses and residents of the city of Burbank. So glad to be with you here this evening. I'd like to share with you a brief presentation on some of the work that we've been doing together collaboratively as an alliance. Just a moment. And truly, collaboration is what characterizes our relationship. The Valley Economic Alliance is your alliance. Founded in the wake of the Northridge earthquake, we have been helping businesses and residents to recover from disasters ever since, and we've been very active during these times indeed, and very much value our partnership with the city of Burbank, and in particular, your Economic Development Division, with which we've been working very closely over the past months on recovery for our businesses, and planting the seeds now for a long-term recovery. So about the alliance, we are a nonprofit organization, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and our goal is really to engage and unite valley stakeholders, raising the standard of living and economic vitality across our five-city region. That includes Burbank, Calabasas, Glendale, Los Angeles, and the city of San Fernando, serving businesses and residents alike. In terms of our economic development initiative, one of our primary goals moving ahead is business attraction and retention, so that we can really be a catalyst to create and retain jobs in the San Fernando Valley, including Burbank. We promote regional development planning and revitalization of underserved commercial corridors, as well as business assistance for our local businesses, helping them to start and grow in our region. In terms of our education and workforce development initiative, creating a qualified workforce that our businesses are able to employ is very important for improving business attraction and retention throughout the region. And to do that, we produced a job fair to help with mitigate the impact of unemployment in the region, and we were continuing to offer the job board that was created at that job fair on September 16th, and continuing to sustain whatever we can do to help connect job seekers with employers that are looking for employees. And thirdly, our livable and sustainable communities, just improving the quality of life and standards of living throughout the valley region, including Burbank. And that involves promoting affordable housing, environmental sustainability, sanitation, and public safety, environmental improvements, and really helping to bring residents together around topics also such as access to healthcare, access to healthy food, et cetera. And all of this comes together to build a vibrant ecosystem that helps businesses to want to stay and grow in our area. In particular with Burbank, we've been working very closely with Burbank in the past several months. Just to give you a little bit of update, the name of the game has really been about collaboration, communication, information sharing, and partnership. So on August 19th, the alliance convened our five-city economic development departments from all of our cities on a roundtable with a Q&amp;A with Scott Abbott, who is with the Environmental Department of the LA County Department of Public Health, and we were able to conduct a Q&amp;A with him and ask particular questions related to the safer-at-home order, the business operation outdoors, particularly for fitness studios, beauty salons, barber shops, and restaurants, and able to really drill down and build that relationship and get answers to questions to help the city of Burbank to respond and to regulate appropriately. On August 26th, we also featured Mayor Springer conducted a video address at our annual meeting, or a live address actually, at our annual meeting, which was very well received by our participants. We had 100 different community leaders from the region, including members of Burbank City Council, as well as Los Angeles City Council, and other elected officials, where she was able to give just an excellent briefing on the advancements in the city of Burbank and the shining example that it is a leader in economic development region-wide. Mayor Springer also kindly participated with us in a video address at Valley Works, our job fair, which did register almost 900 job seekers and almost 50 employers also throughout the region. Later in the month of September, we were able to also partner together and feature Magnolia Park in a keynote address that the alliance provided for Metro on their Community Connections Program, where we talked about the valley's main streets and some of the developments that's happening, and some of the success stories, and the ways that our cities are attracting residents and foot traffic, and also dealing with some of the safer-at-home orders and the downturn, the economic downturn triggered by the pandemic. Ongoing promotion of Burbank Tech Talks are in progress, the Pitch Fest and other programs, as they're identified by our partner Mary Hemzoyen from the city of Burbank's Economic Development Team, and we're promoting Burbank via our newsletter and our social media as well. So what's next for the alliance in Burbank? Well, we're excited to say that we've only just begun to do some great work during this fiscal year. We are in the process of promoting various businesses for the San Fernando Valley Rising Strong Bi-Local Campaign during this month of November. We were able to feature Burbank Business in the month of August, and they were very pleased with the results that they were able to achieve, and just were so touched that the alliance and the city of Burbank were partnering to feature their business and others, so that was really a great success story. We do have Mary Hemzoyen and city of Burbank represented on the alliance's Economic Development Committee, where we will be working with local commercial real estate brokers to attract new businesses to whatever spaces are available for businesses, as well as we'll be looking at how we can retain businesses, help them cutting costs, connecting them with energy incentives, other kinds of employee training, funding, whatever may be available to help them reduce the cost of doing business, and to remain in place and retain the jobs that they have created. We've also, we're engaging the city of Burbank in our Tech Valley Committee. Separate from our Economic Development Committee, we're looking how we can really double down on establishing the valley as a tech hub, and of course, with Burbank's leadership in that area, we'll be spotlighting that, and we're really excited to have the city's participation on that committee. We're going to be promoting the city's commercial developments, any ones that are priorities of the Economic Development Team there, including Avion, Warner Brothers Second Century, Laterra Select, and the First Street Village, and those projects and others that may come up, but those are the ones that we've identified together as the priority ones. The Valley Economic Alliance will be launching a new website in the coming days, and we're going to be featuring the city of Burbank on our homepage and linking to the city's economic development projects. We're also going to be featuring Burbank at our January 15th Valley of the Stars Gala by selecting a business that has recently expanded in Burbank. We know that there is a growing cloud of businesses that are really excited about moving into Burbank. We know Netflix has moved in, TikMouse has moved in, so we'll be working closely with the city to select one to feature at that program. And I just can't convey enough our heartfelt thanks for our partnership and all that we do together to unite the valley and to promote economic development here throughout the region. And I thank you so much, Mayor Springer, and the other council members for your continuing participation with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blake, for your presentation. Council, do you have questions and comments? Yes, Vice Mayor Frutos.
Thank you. I really just wanted to, a heartwarming full thank you to Ms. Blake. I know we met several months ago, and there's a lot of great work that was started by former Mayor Emily Gable Luddy on the board, along with our, at that time, Vice Mayor, current Mayor Sharon Springer, but after we met, I just felt that the other council members, along with our community at large, really needed to hear from you how engaged you are on our future economic, because a lot of people are just not aware of the different vehicles that we're using as a council, to be engaged with our, basically, you know, this COVID-19 and the whole economic nightmare that we're going through, but we've got plans already in place, so welcome and thank you. And I also wanted to give a heartfelt thank you for your networking and partnering with Mary Hemz, and I'll pronounce her name wrong, Hemzoyen, I hope I said it right, Mary, and our Economic Development Team, and with you personally being engaged with the Magnolia Park merchants, because a lot of the residents in that neighborhood feels very strongly that, you know, there's not enough engagement there, and how we're going to really engage the merchants to make sure that the cute little eclectic type of little businesses, you know, continue to move forward with the partnership of the city and the Valley Economic Alliance. So I appreciate the presentation and your time, but I just felt that, you know what, let's communicate this to the whole council and to the members of the audience to know that, you know what, we are really concerned as, you know, the council, the five of us, on, you know, economically, you know, how are we going to move forward, especially as we come out of this COVID-19, and you're part of our ally, you're part of our support team. Thank you, Ms. Blake.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your vision and participation.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please continue.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Blake, thank you very much for being here tonight and joining the city of Burbank. Before we leave, before you get off, could you state that the other cities are involved? I know I was on the board for a couple of years, and I felt, being on the board, that we were kind of being left out, the city of Burbank. The emphasis was West Valley, not so much the East Valley. But as the transition of a couple, three, obviously, executive directors have changed hands, you seem to be very proactive, and I appreciate that. Your presentation has shown to be very proactive for the city of Burbank, and I encourage you to stay on top of that, and encourage you to stay involved with our staff, which is very highly motivated, and I know that they're going to be doing very good things. As long as they're asked to do something, they accomplish it. So I look forward to more engagements with you and the Valley Economic Alliance. And you can just repeat the cities that are involved?
Certainly, certainly, council members. So Burbank, Calabasas, Glendale, Los Angeles, and the city of San Fernando. And I came on board with the alliance about seven months ago, and so have been putting in place many new changes to build upon the rich legacy of the alliance and improve where we could. One of the first things that I did, I was happy to do, was to meet with the city of Burbank and to really talk through what's the strategic plan, and what's the vision, and what are the ways that we can add value for the city. And we've been delivering on that over the subsequent months, and are completely committed to continuing that and expanding that in the coming months and years ahead. We really value your partnership. We see all five of our cities as truly valuable, equally valuable, and each brings different distinctive to the region, and we want to make sure that we're very equitable and inclusive as we promote all five of our member cities. So thank you so much for pointing that out, and I do appreciate and welcome you to keep us accountable and, you know, just take a look at what we are going to be doing next, because I think you'll be pleased.
So far, so good. Continue the good work. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Gable-Letty.
I'll just express my appreciation. It's a pleasure to meet you, albeit virtually. It sounds like you have some really great evolutionary viral, modern-day technology on your mind as well for moving the Economic Alliance forward, and it'll meet the needs of future leaders in our respective communities. I appreciate meeting you and your presenting this evening.
Thank you so much. Likewise.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Blake, for your presentation and for joining us here this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the whole City Council. Much appreciated. Good evening.
Will the city attorney please report on closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public. The council met in closed session earlier this afternoon, or late this afternoon, earlier this evening, and on three different items. One was existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.9 subdivision D1, Baker versus City of Burbank, which was a personal injury matter. Second matter was pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 957.6, labor negotiations, city's negotiator, management services director, and the name of organizations and employee groups as Burbank City Employees Association, firefighter, chief operators, officers unit, International Association Firefighters, Local 778, unrepresented managers, executives, city attorneys, city clerks, city treasurer, and city manager. Lastly, the city met also on anticipated litigation with city as a potential plaintiff under Government Code Section 54, 956.9 subdivision D4. Number of cases was one. This was concerning a case that the city had been involved in, where the city was the plaintiff against Caltrans concerning ownership of the old front street, and the City Council voted tonight to basically continue with that litigation, and we were not able to reach any kind of negotiated settlement with Caltrans. So the council voted unanimously to continue pursuing litigation concerning ownership of that parcel. That's it for the report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now is the time for general public comment. If you'd like to participate, please call in at 818-238-3335. Members of the public may address the council on any matter concerning city business except the public hearing item. If you speak on the public hearing item during the first period of public comment, your comments will not be included in the public hearing record. Comments are limited to three minutes. We ask for your patience as we finish up with one speaker and move to the next. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. Ms. Mullins, do we have callers on the line?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and we're ready to put him through now.
Our first caller is Fiel Dojic. Fiel, you're live with council.
We should talk, only talk about creating the most favorable conditions for economic development of the city, assets investment, potential attracting domestic and foreign investors, development of suburban and rural areas, as well as proposals for the implementation of social and health policy. Schools and hospitals need to be rebuilt. It is necessary that the development of entrepreneurship and agriculture California's long-term strategic goal and the City of Burbank. Plan the reconstruction of the city municipality building, placing spotlights in parks, for example, in Wittenor Park, intersection West Virginia Avenue and Wittenor Highway, plan the paving of dilapidated trees. As for the payment of water and electricity, the City of Burbank does not have a low-income discount program. The City of Los Angeles, Los Angeles County has a low-income discount program. Therefore, it is necessary for cities to have a discount program and to function equally. Citizens, I ask the Madam Mayor and the City Council members to work on my previous speeches about the better economy, with better living costs, better price of labor, net owners of private schools for preschool children expect a minimum wage of $15 or $14.25 per hour to determine a price of 1,204 one bedroom apartment, which is lower price according to the current labor cost, to urgently stop the mafia of property owners who rent out real estate in the City of Burbank and in other cities, and to obtain an order from the Supreme Court just to arrest the perpetrators and to be punished under the criminal law of the United States of America and the State of California, which led to the great collapse of the economy of the City of Burbank and the wider environment. What they are doing has nothing to do with the economy. Therefore, they should be stopped immediately. If you don't know how to do it, call me, and I will do it. A wonderful project, not only for this, but also for other problems, which I have pointed out in previous meetings. Not to forget, which is very important for the, what I said at the meeting held on August 11, 2020, for emergency intervention to stop the expensive prices of products for food and to urgently to make a lower price in the stores, routes, and loans, and to be commensurate with the cost of living. Have a great day, everybody. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Laura Cycley. Laura, you are live with council.
Hello, good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Larissa Cycley. I'm a member of BHRC, and I know this has been mentioned by former Mayor Marcia Ramos, but I just want to urge you to acknowledge the Burbank Sundown laws that happened years ago, and the reason why I want you to acknowledge it is just so it will never happen again in the future. I know that we're a different city now, we're a lot more diverse, but I think it's good to acknowledge this, you know, law that happened during the 1960s, I believe. I could be wrong, but I think it's good to acknowledge that point in time for the City of Burbank, just so it will never happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Nadra Ostrom. Nadra, you are live with council.
Okay, yes, thank you. Hello, everybody. I, my name is Nadra Ostrom. I'm a Burbank resident, and I have two kids in the BUSB school district. I'm on the district DEI, Diversity and Equity Inclusion Committee, and I was really happy tonight to hear that the City Council is considering a proclamation regarding the acknowledgement of Burbank as a sundowntown, and I'd like to encourage you to put forth a resolution denouncing these past acts and how they've impacted Black people and people of color in this town, and I really hope that you take the next step and bring forth a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for calling.
Nori, you are live with council.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Nori Walla. I'm calling in to comment on Agenda Item Number Five, the letter regarding the aerial tram in Griffith Park. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I sent you an email yesterday and then another follow-up email today, which had a couple of exhibits on it. My issue with the aerial tram is I believe that if it goes through, it will have a significant negative impact on the equestrian community in the City of Burbank. This equestrian community, as you know, has been around for over 100 years. We've been riding in the park for over 100 years. We ride across the bridge on a, we ride across the bridge on a, we ride across the river on a bridge built in 1939. Should the aerial tram go in, there will be a significant negative impact on any trail that the, there will be a significant negative impact on equestrians or any trail that is impacted by that particular route. The exhibits that I sent this afternoon, which I hope you've received, are maps. The first map is, has a depiction of Travel Town where it really is, not where it is, not where it really is, and the Oak Canyon Trail. What you can see in that map is you can see the yellow line, which shows the, which shows the route from the Glendale Riverside Rancher all the way to the Burbank Mariposa Bridge, crossing the river, going under the tunnels, and emerging in Oak Canyon. That first exhibit also has a blue line, a rectangle, just for your information, that indicates that it's a very high fire hazard severity zone, and that is Route One, which appears to be the favored route of the tram people. I'm trying to time myself, and I keep losing my place here. The second exhibit that I gave you is a much simpler map showing the, showing the bridge, showing the Martinez Arena, and showing the relationship of Travel Town. I'm very concerned about this aerial tram, as are a lot of others. If we lose access to Griffith Park, especially through Route One, that will basically be the end of the equestrian neighborhood, and I don't think that that's what the City Council would really like to happen. I think the City Council-
Thank you very much for your call. Your time is up. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Heather Robb. Heather, you are live with council.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. I'd like to start by thanking Mayor Springer and the Burbank Human Relations Council for speaking on the very important issues of prejudice and discrimination tonight. I'm glad to see this proclamation, which shows that our city is starting the difficult but necessary work of self-reflection around these topics, which have for too long been avoided merely because they are uncomfortable to some. How shameful that we have valued some people's comfort over the life and death reality for others in our community. I'd like to state my full-throated support for the Sundowntown Resolution presented tonight by the BHRC. This history is painful to acknowledge, which is all the more reason why we must acknowledge it. Until we hold ourselves accountable for past actions, we cannot move forward meaningfully. Some might say a resolution is merely symbolic, just words, but words matter. It mattered that Mayor Springer began her State of the City Address by saying Black Lives Matter, and I'd like to thank you for that, Madam Mayor. The words of BUSB's recently approved anti-racist statement matter, as did the words of the many community members who called in to support it. Hateful words shared on social media matter. They do damage, they sow division, they show us that even as we look backwards, we must also acknowledge that racism, prejudice, and discrimination are sadly still a present-day reality in our wonderful city, and that is why we need our elected leaders to use words and to empower those words with action. So I strongly encourage council to pass a Sundowntown Resolution, and I hope you will follow the words of that resolution with actions that make our city as safe, welcoming, fair, and just to Burbankers of color as it is to white residents like myself. Thank you.
Thank you for calling.
Our next caller is Carmenita Heliger. Carmenita, you are live with council.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name's Carmenita Heliger, and I'm a Burbank resident, and I have children who have attended Burbank schools, and I still have two children who are currently attending Burbank schools. I'm calling tonight to support the resolution for Sundowntown, but I'm also calling to make you aware that racism is not something in the history of Burbank. It is still happening right now, today, in your school system. We have five books that use the derogatory N-word that is traumatizing Black and Brown children, that is read out loud in classrooms, played on videotapes, and they say it's part of the curriculum. When the teachers were confronted about this and told the stories of our hurt children and told about their tears that they've cried, the teachers' responses were that Black and Brown children can be uncomfortable in the classroom. When it was presented to the president of the Burbank Teacher Association, she has chosen to not care about our children, but to post on social media different articles with lies about banning children's books. It is not true. What I'm asking you this evening is to contact the Burbank Teachers Association, each and every one of you. I'm asking Councilmember Gable-Letty, Councilmember Murphy, Vice Mayor Frutos, Councilmember Talamontes, and Madam Mayor. And I need you to tell the president of the BTA and also all of those teachers that are supporting still keeping these books that the children that I love are important, Black and Brown children matter, their tears and anxiety matters, but I want you to make clear to them that my children and no other children are niggers. And if that word upsets you, imagine having it read by a white teacher to an 11- and 12-year-old child, and they can do nothing about it. If you choose not to call the BTA, knowing that children are being hurt, I will understand that you are complicit in my children's trauma. You have a choice to save children in their trauma, to stop the trauma, and I hope you would choose our children and their safety, their education, and their happiness. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Alex Arseneega. Alex, you are live with council.
Hi, good evening. Hello, Mayor Springer, Vice Mayor Frutos, Councilmember Murphy, Councilmember Gable-Letty, and Councilmember Talamontes. Thank you so much, Ms. Ramos, for the presentation. It was great to learn more about what the organization is doing. I'd also like to thank the voters and the organizers who showed up big during Election Day. We have been saying that our city demographics are changing, and we showed the city that they truly are. I want to fully, fully support a resolution addressing Burbank, California's sundown, sundown town. I think this is something very important, very symbolic, not just because our neighboring towns are doing it, but I think it needs to send a very loud and clear message that our city is not going to welcome this old rhetoric, this back-to-1950s thinking, the pleasant-filled-before picture. We're moving forward- We're moving forward. We're not new residents. It's not their Burbank. It's our Burbank, and we need to build it together. And I think part of this is we really need to strongly denounce white supremacy. We need to address racism in this town. We need to address that it's not okay. And it's also not a good look to have a council member running a city of Burbank page that really invites racists to just spew their hatred all over, spew inaccuracies about science. And it really continues, this hatred, this message. We need to start shutting that stuff down. And we need to just moderate these groups. And we can't allow people working with the community to allow this type of hatred to go on. We need to be a more welcoming and an inclusive city, and I really look forward to working with each and every one of you guys to further that mission. Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling. Next caller.
Our next caller is Constantine Anthony. Constantine, you are live with council.
Hello, council. This is Constantine Anthony, and I just wanted to show my appreciation, not just for the resolution that was made today, you know, acknowledging the bigotry and the racism of our past and how it affects the present today and everything that BHRC has said regarding that. I'm so very proud to live in a city that has done that. I also wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the work of all five council members who have worked tirelessly throughout the years, specifically council member Gable Luddy and council member Murphy. I know the work that you have done is a thankless job, and I appreciate having the ability next month to join the council and stand on the shoulders of you giants to continue the work moving forward, especially with the changing demographic and the understanding of where our past came from so that we can move forward into the future. So I wanted to also thank all the other candidates who ran in the election. They put up some great ideas, and we've had some very spirited debates, and I appreciate each and every one of them for running. This is not, you know, an easy job to take on, and I respect each and every one of them for putting their foot forward. So thank you. And lastly, on a separate note, I just needed to say something about what is currently happening in Armenia right now. My family history is tied closely to the Armenian genocide. I'm of Greek descent, and so I'm aware that what is happening in Armenia now is likened to the genocide of a hundred years ago. The prime minister signed away a lot of land, a lot of contested land, a lot of Armenian land. And it is heartbreaking to hear. I know he did it to stop the violence and preserve life, but it is just a very saddened... saddening thing to witness. And my heart goes out to all of the Armenian residents here in Burbank. So thank you, council, and I will see you all next month. Okay?
Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Chief Mike Davis. Chief Davis, you are live with council.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to have this opportunity to comment on my 20 years of... I worked with Kurt Reynolds and the impact he had on the Burbank Fire Department. I first met Kurt Reynolds when I walked through the apparatus doors of the old headquarters' fire station after being hired by the Burbank Fire Department as a recruit firefighter in September 1969. He was attired in his dress blues, and I remember thinking how he appeared to be the epitome of what I thought a fire officer should look like. His hair was neatly combed, and his uniform was perfectly fitted and pressed. Later, I found out that some of his coworkers referred to him as Prince Valiant because of his style and manner. At that time, he was a fire captain, and as his career progressed, he was promoted to Fire Battalion Chief, and somewhat later, upon the retirement of Robert Christopherson, he was appointed as the Fire Chief of the Burbank Fire Department. After a few years later, as I was working my way up through the ranks in a similar manner, I was promoted to the rank of Battalion Chief by Kurt. And for the next 10 years, I joined five other Battalion Chiefs who worked directly for him, and we all found ourselves benefiting from his experience and his mentoring, as well as his vision for the future. Kurt was an amazing and gifted individual. He was our Fire Chief for 15 years and worked tirelessly for the betterment of the Burbank Fire Department and the personnel who staffed it through advanced and modern equipment and training that reflected the ongoing needs of the citizens we served. He also was extensively involved in the acquisition of the funding to replace our aging and badly needed infrastructure that housed our apparatus and personnel. Kurt retired in 1990, and I, as his successor, thanks to the approval and appointment by then-city manager Bud Overham, was fortunate to have inherited a department that was firmly established and in position to provide quality, emergency, and general life safety services to the citizens of the city of Burbank for the next 14 years, and by others for many years to follow. Curtis Reynolds will certainly be missed by many, but he will never be forgotten. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on a good friend and my former boss. He was a great individual.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tamla Takahashi. Tamla, you are live with council.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm calling this evening about two items. First, item number five on the agenda, a letter from council regarding the aerial tram. I oppose the tram for several reasons, including its impact on the environment, its impact on traffic, and for aesthetic reasons. It is also a waste of taxpayer money for a little gain. However, tonight, we're discussing the impact it could have on Burbank. And while the staff report says it will have little impact, I would like to offer another perspective. Burbank's Rancho District is one of a kind. It is the only community like it in the LA area. Horse property is right in the middle of the urban jungle that has direct and safe access to trails and open spaces. I don't ride, but I have many friends who own horses, own horse property, or come from out of town to ride horses here. One of my friends, whose daughter rides horses, said to me today, "It is really nice to have the riding trails and hiking trails and a space to explore that doesn't feel like you are in the city, but is right in the city." If the aerial tram is installed, it will take away the important neighborhood's access to trails. It will reduce the availability of safe trails, and it will make our horse district less unique and less appealing. Our Rancho District is a microeconomy of its own. Not only are there horses, but are there small and micro businesses surrounding them: feed, grooming, vets, lessons, supplies, et cetera. And when riders come to Burbank, they patronize local businesses. Another friend of mine said that her riding colleagues even had their dentists and dry cleaners here in Burbank. All four of these tram routes will impact our Rancho District, in particular impacting Tunnel 7, which is the safest and best route into the park. But all of the routes impact the trails, either making them less accessible, less safe, or forcing horses to ride near the freeway. Please consider writing a letter opposing the tram and its impact on the Rancho District, as this Rancho District benefits all of Los Angeles, not just Burbank. It serves the equestrian community in a way that is not found anywhere else in LA. Please oppose any tram project that reduces access for our horses and support our Rancho District and continue to preserve one of the most important and special neighborhoods in our city. I'm also calling about the proclamation for condemning prejudice and promoting inclusivity, equity, and diversity. This is a great first step, and thank you for presenting this proclamation. And I hope this leads to the next step, which is creating an anti-racist policy imposition with action items for how that will be implemented in the city. BHRC's presentation tonight is an excellent set of opportunities, especially the Sundowntown Resolution and the community dialogue. I 100% support these opportunities. Thank you for your consideration, and have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Nick Schultz. Nick, you are live with council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of city council. I just wanted to take a moment tonight to thank each and every one of you, and in fact, all of our citywide elected officials, city staff, members of our boards and commissions, and our city employees for the incredible work that you've been doing over the last several months to provide crucial services to the residents of Burbank. I also just want to take a moment and thank my neighbors and my fellow candidates who ran for all sorts of elected office in this last cycle. It was certainly a most unusual time, but I truly believe this is when Burbank needed us most. So thank you all for throwing your hat in the ring. I just wanted to mention, as our city clerk mentioned earlier, that we're still in the process of winding down this election cycle. We're counting every single ballot to ensure that every voice is heard as part of this process. And I just wanted to make a quick note that if I am fortunate enough to be elected as the next member of this esteemed body at the completion of this process, I sincerely look forward to working with each and every one of you to make Burbank that much better and to tackle our most pressing issues together. And while I have the floor, I will just mention that I unequivocally support the proposed resolution referenced in the presentation tonight by former Mayor Ramos. So with that, thank you all for your time, and have a good meeting.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Madam Mayor, that will conclude our calls for the first period of public comments.
Thank you. I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response from city council, the city manager, and/or the city attorney. Yes, Councilmember Gable Luddy.
Everybody seems so reluctant. First of all, I thank everybody for calling. I appreciate the words of Mr. Schultz, who said, "We're still counting." And as for the other candidate, I'd ask that you please not characterize my contributions to the city. For those who called in on the resolution, I think that... I didn't quite understand, Madam Mayor. Maybe staff is already bringing it back, or do we have to ask for it during additional public... Additional agenda items?
We can answer that question right now. Yes, Mr. Hess.
Yeah, I would recommend bringing the different actions to consider that were in the PowerPoint as part of additional agenda items, so we could capture everything.
Oh, okay, okay. So for those of you who called in about the resolution on Burbank and its history as a sundowntown, I think you can pretty much rest assured that when the time comes up at tonight's agenda, we will be asking that that, along with the other matters that the BHRC would like to pursue, we will be asking that those come back for a discussion. In particular, community dialogue, which is what I think one of the callers spoke about. Well, more than one. Ms. Arsiniaga, Ms. Robb, Carmenita, that we also pursue that as a way to truly listen to one another. So I'll stop there. And for Ms. Walla, who called in tonight, yes, I did receive your exhibits and your email, and I will hold my comments for agenda item number five. I appreciate you doing the research. And I think that's it. Thank you, everybody, for calling in and sharing your thoughts and certainly your concerns about how we move forward in a constructive way.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Talamontes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would like to thank everyone that called in tonight, sharing your thoughts with us. Some of these items will be dealt with part of the agenda tonight. Others will be discussing a future agenda item, I'm sure. I'd like to thank Mr. Anthony and Mr. Schultz for stepping forward and looking forward to having you join our council in December, when the votes are all counted and finalized. Chief Davis, my former boss. Chief, thank you for saying those nice words about Chief Reynolds. Like I mentioned earlier, he was the one that hired me to come on the Burbank Fire Department, so I'm very thankful for that. I had a great career, like yourself, Chief. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I too would like to thank all the callers, and some of the comments and questions will be addressed further in the agenda, and then we'll bring others up as additional agenda items. Thank you. Okay. We move to the consent calendar, which can be enacted in one motion. Ms. Mullins, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Consent calendar. Item number one is the city council minutes. Approve the city council minutes for regular meeting on October 27th and the dark meeting on November 3rd. Item two, authorize the city manager to negotiate and approve contract amendments with third-party operators of the city facilities to modify the payment terms subject to impacted operations caused by coronavirus pandemic. There are only two items on the agenda, and that concludes the consent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Yes, Councilmember Murphy.
Yeah, I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, Councilmember Gable Luddy seconded that.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Gable Luddy?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is the time and place for the hearing to consider a request to adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Burbank amending Title 10, Chapter 1, in order to amend the zoning definitions and development standards for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units consistent with applicable state laws. After staff's presentation, there will be a public comment period during the public hearing session. If you wish to comment on this item only, please call 818-238-3335. You will be placed in a queue until the public hearing comment period begins. Before we begin, are there any disclosures relating to this hearing? Okay, no. Ms. Mullins, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, including emails and other documents?
Yes, you do.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce herself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Mayor Springer and members of the council. My name is Marcia Medina, and I am an associate planner with the Planning Division. Tonight, I'll be presenting the proposed changes to the current ordinance regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs and junior ADUs. The presentation will also briefly touch on the ongoing review of ADUs within the city. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to give the council an update regarding the ongoing review of ADUs within the city, as well as presenting some proposed changes to the current ADU and junior ADU ordinance. The changes that are being proposed are so that the ADU and junior ADU regulations are clearer and easier to understand. The proposed changes are intended to ensure continued compliance with state ADU law. The following slides will show, on the left side of the screen in blue, the existing language. On the right side of the screen in green, you will see the proposed changes to the language. The proposed changes to the language will be marked in red font. As staff has continued to process ADU applications, there have been questions over what is considered as a kitchen for the purposes of an ADU and junior ADU. The state law does not define the minimum requirements for a kitchen, so staff has included a definition that would ensure that a fully functioning kitchen would be provided to ensure that a safe and fully functional habitable space is created. The provisions under the state law require that an ADU can be constructed in the same location and to the same dimensions as an existing... as an existing legally built structure. The state law does not define what is meant by the dimension of a structure. Staff has concluded that the intent of dimension in the state law is to include the wall and heights of an existing structure. This means that when an existing legal non-conforming structure is demolished for the purposes of creating a new ADU, that new ADU is limited to the same height as the structure that it is replacing. City staff has confirmed with the state regarding the minimum allowed square footage for an ADU. The state provisions require that an ADU of at least 800 square feet must be allowed, and an attached ADU at 850 square feet must be allowed. The language has been modified to remove any confusion in the scenario where the size of the main dwelling will not allow the creation of an attached ADU of at least 850 square feet. Language was added to the ordinance to ensure that it is clear that when a balcony, porch, or patio is attached to the ADU, it will count towards the allowable ADU square footage. This modification clears up any potential discrepancies. By adding language about the stairs being able to touch grade level when an ADU is constructed on top of a garage clears up any misunderstanding about the intent of the language of the code and makes it clear that staircases are not prohibited. City staff has verified with the state HCD that when an ADU is constructed on top of a garage or another accessory structure, the maximum required setback for the ADU is four feet from the property line. This change ensures that the ordinance is consistent with the state law. Consistent with HCD guidelines, garages as well as habitable spaces attached to the existing residence can be converted into an ADU or junior ADU. This language was added to clarify that a non-conforming setback of an existing garage or accessory structure can be kept when it involves a conversion into an ADU. The proposed language is intended to inform applicants that buildings that lie within an existing public easement or dedication must adhere to the required easement or dedication, which may result in demolition or relocation of a portion or the entire structure. There have been some exceptions where the Public Works Department has been able to accommodate a request to build an ADU within an easement or dedication. The language being added allows for flexibility to build an ADU that may be impacted by an easement on a case-by-case basis at the discretion of the Public Works Director. The state law is silent regarding building separation between ADUs and other structures on a lot. The five-foot separation was added to ensure that there is adequate separation between structures. The noted building separation is consistent for ADUs and other residential structures. The language of this section was changed to be in compliance with state law and so that it is clear that attached garages are included as a space in which a junior ADU can be constructed. State law is silent on minimum requirements for a kitchen with regards to a junior ADU. As noted earlier, a definition was added to clarify what the minimum requirements are for a kitchen and is referenced in this section. State law requires that ADUs and junior ADUs to have a rental period of no less than 30 days. During the planning board hearing, when these updates were presented, the board had expressed that the minimum rental period should be increased to 90 days. The increased minimum rental period is consistent with applicable state law. Under state law, an owner occupancy restriction cannot be required unless it is for the construction of a junior ADU. This language was added to ensure that it is clear that a property deed is not required as part of the application unless it is required by state law. As part of the permit process, all structures that are not the actual ADU itself must be permitted under a separate permit. This helps ensure that the review of ADUs can be easily kept track and avoids confusion when applying the applicable city development standards. This language was added to ensure that this is a clear permitting standard and ongoing compliance with a 60-day shot clock for ADU reviews. During the course of the last six months since the ADU ordinance was last updated, staff has noted that there has been a steady demand for the construction of ADUs throughout the city. Since 2017, there has been approximately 543 ADU permit requests. The location of the ADUs is dispersed throughout the city, with a majority of the ADUs being detached from the main dwelling. Staff has not received any complaints or pushback expressed from the general public regarding the construction of ADUs. The map being shown gives the general location of where the ADUs and junior ADUs are located throughout the city. As seen in the map, the ADUs are spread throughout the city with no clusters or concentrated areas of ADUs. This map shows a section of the city near the intersection of North Hollywood Way and West Magnolia Boulevard, which is mainly zoned R1 single-family residential. As seen in the map, the location of the ADUs are spread throughout the neighborhood with approximately one ADU per block. This map shows a section of the city that is zoned R1 single-family, as well as the designated hillside area that is also zoned R1. As shown in the map, there are few ADUs located in the designated hillside area, while the ADUs located in the R1 zone are spread out. As part of the recommended changes, staff has ensured that the changes are in compliance with state law and will result in an ordinance that is easier to apply and equally as easy to understand by staff and the general public. The proposed ordinance is consistent with the planning board recommendation. Therefore, staff recommends that the council adopt and introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Burbank amending Title 10, Chapter 1, in order to amend the zoning definitions and development standards for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units consistent with applicable state law. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open...
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry. There's two things that I did want to bring up before I conclude my presentation, if I could. The first thing would be, in the staff report, I just wanted to bring to your attention, as well as with the rest of the council members, on page four, there is some language on there on Section F3 that is not being represented in the ordinance. That's a typo there. The ordinance itself is correct, so that language in red is not reflected in the ordinance. So, I just wanted to point that out. It would be Page 4 of the staff report. In the ordinance, it would be Attachment 1-3. The second one that I wanted to bring up is, we did, staff did receive an email earlier this evening from Mr. Matt Gelfen. Staff did review that email, and we concluded that the ordinance as proposed is in compliance with the state law, and we believe it should be moved forward. That is all.
Thank you for your presentation. We'll now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council for a maximum time of three minutes on the public hearing item only. To address the council, please call 818-238-3335. City Clerk Mullins, do we have any callers on the line for comment?
Now, Madam Mayor, the lines have been opened, and there's no one in the queue.
Okay. There being no public comment, I declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative... Does council have questions? Yes, Councilmember Gabe Letty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, staff, for your report. More importantly, thank you for your six-month update and providing information that we in the community can see the location and the nature of the ADUs being throughout the city, which I think is inherently a good thing. So, I appreciate that update, because I remember when we adopted the ordinance at the beginning of this year, there was a lot of concern around the ADU law and its implementation. So, we all agreed, we as a council, that we wanted to hear how well it was being implemented and what the issues were. And with the hundreds of ADUs that have either been permitted or built in Burbank, it sounds like we have struck the right balance with the initial law and that we also are able to make some corrections to the current ordinance in a manner that's already been vetted, if you will, by HCD, so that those who are concerned really have nothing to be concerned about. My one question really had to do with the... It was under development standards. It is Page 4. It's called "Square Footage," Section F3, unless preempted by state law, new language. When an accessory dwelling unit is attached to an existing primary dwelling, the maximum allowed size of that accessory dwelling unit shall be no more than... And we deleted 50% of the main dwelling and left in 850 or 1,000 square feet and took out no less than 800. So, it's really a broader global question around the nature of an accessory dwelling unit. And maybe you can restate this clearly, so I understand. If there's a primary house that's 900 square feet, or let's say 850 square feet, the accessory dwelling unit, even though it's called accessory, will be equal in size to that dwelling unit, or could be larger. So, I just would like us to be clear on that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Yes, Council, Vice Mayor Frutos.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Mr. Almedina, thank you for the presentation. My question is parking. Has there been any issue with parking? And how many of the current approved ADUs are using the front of their houses as parking? Since it was allowed originally in the code.
Madam Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Maybe Mr. Almedina can go back and answer Councilmember Gabe Letty's question, and then move on.
Okay.
Because it's, we're not, we're through the public... We're still here, we're part of public hearing, right? Because you're asked for questions.
Uh-huh, okay.
But I think normally, we try to answer council's questions as they come up, so that they don't get lost.
Sure, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so first, we'll have Mr. Almedina answer Councilmember Gabe Letty's questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. Regarding that Section F3 on Page 4, as I mentioned earlier, the beginning language that's noted in red is actually not noted in the ordinance. So, the ordinance would not include that language. The changes regarding the 50% is, just as you brought up, if a house were, let's say, you know, 850 square feet, the state law does allow or require that an ADU of at least 850 square feet be allowed. So, that's why we changed the language, because it was inconsistent with the scenario of an ADU being... Or, I'm sorry, a main dwelling being at a smaller size.
Thank you. Councilmember Gabe Letty, does that answer your question? Okay, thank you. Okay. Vice Mayor Frutos?
Okay.
Did, Mr. Almedina, did you hear his question about the parking?
Yes. Regarding the parking, at this moment, staff was unable to do any analysis regarding parking. But in the future, the city is planning on doing traffic analysis through the revision of the... Some of the specific plans in the city. And through the study of the specific plans, we'll look at the impacts of traffic and housing as well.
If I may suggest, as you're looking at that, if you can maybe keep a tally from Public Works in dealing with the complaints that come in on trash pickup days, to make sure that if we have to come up with some type of ordinance in the future based upon the limited parking, because that does come up from time to time as you're looking at the parking, I'd like to be aware of what's going on. Please.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. No more questions.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. And I appreciate staff making this...
Can you, we're just doing questions right now, Councilmember Murphy, so...
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I can wait. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Councilmember Talamontas, did you have a question? Okay. It's on Page 3, and there were questions that we had in the beginning about the square footage of the lots, the type of ownership for each ADU, and/or further protections of ADUs outside the mountain fire zone. And you note that, it's noted that staff is working on this and will be presented to us in early 2021, because I'm really interested in ownership. And so, that will be updated, like, within the next six months, do you think?
Yes. So, as noted in the staff report, that is information that we will work on, just because it does take a lot of research, a lot of time from staff to look through each individual permit and look at that information. Also, just as noted, currently, under the state law, the owner occupancy is not required unless it's for a junior ADU. So, many of the older permits, we would be able to back and really look to see which ones are owner occupied as a requirement. But we will definitely be looking at that other information that was noted in the staff report.
Okay. Because owner occupancy was required if they had a junior ADU, right?
Under the current law right now, yes. That is still a requirement for a junior ADU, yes.
Okay. And so, in the 543 building permit applications, are those just for one?
So, they, some of them, actually, for those, I don't think we necessarily looked to see if it was one or two ADUs. It was mainly for each permit. So, I think that for one permit, you could have two ADUs, let's say, in a multifamily under one permit. So, it would be 543... I believe it would be 543 ADUs is what that number is reflecting.
Oh, okay. Because if it were 543 building permits, it could be more ADUs.
Yes, but these were individual permits. I'm sorry, individual ADUs, rather.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Talamontas?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question in regards to... So, just to get it clear in my mind, the owner occupant requirement is still in play?
The owner occupancy requirement is required for a junior ADU, but under the state law, is not a requirement for a regular ADU. For a new one, yes.
Now, can you, can a property owner have an ADU as well as assisted living facility in the home?
I'm not sure. I don't know if maybe I can get someone to clear that up. I don't know if I have that answer.
So, this is Fred. Maybe I can chime in. I think two different questions. I think as far as the living facility and whether that's a permitted use within the residential zone, which under state law it is. When it comes to the ADU and having owner occupancy, there are permits that were issued under the old regulations, and that required for them to actually reside onsite for owner occupancy. So, if there's a potential conflict within those two, that's something that we'd have to look into and see whether it fell within those previously approved ADUs that required owner occupancy, or if it was one of the newer ones, where, under the new regulations, there is an owner occupancy provision for onsite habitation.
So, there is owner occupancy for both?
It depends. It depends when the permit was issued for the ADU. If it was issued under the old code, then there could be an owner occupancy requirement. But if it was issued after the new regulations were put in place in this past year, then the owner occupancy requirement has gone away for all ADUs except for junior ADUs.
And if I can add something, Madam Mayor. And I, if I can add something, Madam Mayor. She's saying yes, so I'm going to go ahead. The, the, the new law only, I believe, and if somebody else wants to jump in, I think it's through 2025, the occupancy requirements don't apply. And if you recall, and I'm sorry, I can't find it as we're sitting here, I was looking really quick. We wrote into our ordinance that our occupancy require, owner occupancy requirements would come back into play as soon as the state law allowed that to happen. So there's, the council doesn't have to take any action, it's already there, it sort of springs back to life. So what that means is we have a five-year period where a ADU that's not a junior ADU, there doesn't need to be owner occupancy. If you received your permit before 2020 or actually were in the queue, we applied the old rules, you would have to have owner occupancy. And after 2025, unless state law changes, again, owner occupancy will be in play. And as to your specific question, it, I could see a scenario where someone could have an ADU as well as an assisted living, potentially an assisted living if it's under a certain amount of people and allowed by the state in our, in, excuse me, in the, in a residential area. So right now, people could do what some traditionally called like a board and care, similar, mainly for assisted living elderly people and that they could have that and still may be able to have an ADU if there's, if they meet all the other requirements.
So you can have business, a business in the home with a board and care, and you can have a rental in the garage with an ADU.
So what you have to realize, if I may, Madam Mayor and the council, is that the state doesn't real, doesn't call everything a business. So we've had this discussion before with some other uses that the state allows if it's under a certain amount and they don't consider it a business. So it doesn't fall and it's not necessarily something we can regulate. And so if it was built now, if an ADU was built now and came in under the new rules, then for the next four years, because we're fastly approaching 2021, and I believe it was 2025. So if I'm wrong on that, somebody can, it was 2025. So for the next four years, they would not have to, the owner does not have to occupy.
How about if the permit was two or three years old?
If there is already an existing permit, then it would be under the old rules and the owner occupancy is there. The requirement is there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So in early 2021, we'll know how the ownership is going, right?
We will, yeah, we will do what we can to get information as far as which ADUs that were permitted prior to the new regulations were done with the owner occupancy.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions? Okay, so I declare the hearing closed and the council will now deliberate. Yes, Councilmember Gabe Letty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. These are all really good questions. And I think Councilmember Talamontis raises an unintended consequences issue that we should probably continue to follow and look into more closely. It's, it's sort of the, it's, it's taking single-family lots and turning them into all kinds of uses. And I understand, Madam City Attorney, your response. I think you're right, I'm not saying that, you're correct in your response. I'm not saying that the consequences are right. I think the consequences are significant and difficult and we need to navigate it. But getting back to the ordinance before us, good job by our staff. The modifications are minor, consistent with the state law. I am particularly pleased that the planning board submitted some changes that I think are certainly reasonable and I see the staff feels they're reasonable. So I would, I will support these amendments. And thanks staff for going the extra mile and fine tuning this in a way that is compatible with the community of Burbank and its nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Murphy.
Yes. I'll support these changes tonight, but I would like to see additional reports in the future about the parking. I mean, before it was a requirement that the parking had to be in the back, there had to be two spaces available. Now they can pretty much park wherever they want, including on top of you if you happen to be walking by. I hate the fact that we can protect the fire zone, but we can't protect anybody else. I was talking to Paul Herman about this and he was saying that his parents are leaving the community they love because there's so many ADUs that, you know, they're in fights for parking spaces, they're having all kinds of problems. And this is great for our arena numbers, but isn't great for our community as a whole. So I think we have to keep an eye on it, a real careful eye. I would suggest to be brought back at six months and looked at again. Local control. Thank you.
Okay, other. I agree, it needs to come back to us because the time, COVID has just been such an unusual time for us that the impact might not be fully known at this point. And so, and we've made a commitment to protect our neighborhoods, all of our neighborhoods. And I think we need to stand by that commitment and look forward to a future report that continues to measure the impact and some of these questions that you just simply couldn't be answered at this point. Yes, Mr. Prescott.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, if I may, we can, we can provide an update to the council. I would suggest that perhaps 12 months would be better than six months. We are, we are nearly 12 months in to the first year of the new law and not a full 12 months into the new ordinance taking effect. And you're right, with COVID, things may be kind of unknown and we expect that will remain so for at least several more months before we can get an idea of what normal is. So perhaps if the council would be okay with it, a 12-month report, we can provide. Otherwise, six months if the council desires.
Well, on page three, there's a commitment for early 2021 on some of this.
That's right. Whatever the council desires.
Okay. So I suggest sticking with the six months since this is, this commitment is made anyway. So is that okay with all of you? Yes, Vice Mayor Frutos?
I'm open for eight. I know Mr. Prescott said 12, you're saying six. You know, I kind of find a happy medium there. I would say eight because he's right about COVID. I, you know, my thoughts, because six months might be kind of short. I'd like to know what happens in eight, if that's okay with the rest of the council. I'm just an idea, throwing it out there.
Do you want to know the information of what they can bring back in early 2021? Do you want to report on that?
You know, I kind of, I kind of agree with Mr. Prescott, but I don't want to go 12 months. I figure eight months will give him enough opportunity to prepare his report and see what changes are. And maybe we're coming out of COVID-19 and things will change. But I'd rather be at the forefront. But I don't know, I think eight months might be a happy medium there to get a report back a little more factual and hopefully we're out of COVID in eight months, I hope. I know, I agree with Councilman Talamontis, don't bust my bubble. Let me be in the bubble, we're going to get out of this quicker than later. But you're right, Jess, you're right, sir.
Okay, so do we have a consensus, six or eight months?
I'll let you make the command decision, Mayor. I mean, I'm sorry, Jess, you had your hand up.
Yes, Councilmember Talamontis.
Well, we, so we're talking, right now we're in the middle, almost the middle of November. How about if we set the timeline to June? I guess that'd be eight months, right? If we go for June 21?
Okay, it's June 2021, how's that? Nod. Okay, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. So is, can somebody please move this item, this recommendation? Yes, Council, Vice Mayor Frutos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Burbank amending Title X, Chapter One zoning in order to amend the zoning definitions and development standards for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units consistent with applicable state laws. And second, I'd like a report back from our city staff on June 21 of 2021 for an update with all the information, including parking and issues of trash cans being moved, complaints coming in from Public Works. So we get the, the complete picture.
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
Yes.
Councilmember Gabe Letty.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontis.
Yes.
And Mayor Springer.
Yes.
Thank you.
There are two reports to counsel tonight. Our first report is for approval of the city's legislative platform for 2021. Will Christine Ellis please present the report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Christine Ellis, analyst with the City Manager's Office. Tonight's staff is seeking approval of the City of Burbank's 2021 legislative platform. A legislative platform is a summary of locally approved policy statements that provide a clear understanding of the city's priorities and creates a framework for responding to state and federal legislation. Drafted in consultation with the city's advocacy firms, the 2021 legislative platform contains topics that have the potential for county, state, and federal action in the upcoming year. On October 13th and 27th, council received updates from the city's advocacy firms on impactful legislation at the state and federal level. The priorities outlined in the 2021 platform will allow the city to proactively respond to such legislation and engage with its representatives to protect and enhance the interests of Burbank's residents and businesses. This year's platform contains 17 main priorities, ranging from budget and state and federal funding to economic development, sustainability, and housing. The 2021 platform also contains a new priority, healthy communities, which advocates for legislation and funding opportunities to increase access to subsidized meal programs, expand community garden programs, encourage outdoor activities and recreation, and promote well-being and access to resources for older adults. As the COVID pandemic persists, the city also recognizes the need for direct state and federal funding to localities for disaster response and community recovery programs. The city has joined the League of California Cities Local Recovery Campaign to advocate for direct and flexible federal assistance to local governments to mitigate the impacts of the pandemic. The addition of this policy statement to the 2021 platform allows the city to continue advocating for various forms of local relief as Congress deliberates another stimulus package. The Economic Development Section also advocates for measures that promote local business while opposing unnecessary regulations that may hinder economic recovery. Energy and sustainability mandates at the state level have also necessitated additional policy statements in the 2021 platform. Governor Newsom recently signed an executive order establishing a goal for 100% of in-state sales of new passenger cars and trucks to be zero emission by 2035. As the prevalence of electric vehicles increase, increases, it is essential that the state provide localities with the necessary funding for procurement of mandated electric vehicles and supporting infrastructure. Likewise, the city will seek state and federal funding to implement mandated solid waste recycling and organics programs and supports postponing deadlines for data collection and implementation of sustainability mandates in light of the economic and operational impacts of COVID-19 on public agencies and local business. Lastly, as the federal and state legislature consider criminal justice reforms, the 2021 platform includes support for reasonable reform measures that are inclusive of concerns from prosecutors, victims' rights groups, and law enforcement agencies and do not hinder law enforcement's ability to protect the community. Building upon council's action in 2019 to address the youth vaping epidemic and ban the sale of flavored tobacco in Burbank, the platform also supports tools, rather than fines or criminal penalties, to enforce regulation of tobacco product possession amongst minors, specifically confiscation and mandated educational programs for youth. As previously stated, the legislative platform provides a framework for the city to respond to relevant legislation and prepare written correspondence to legislators or participate in advocacy campaigns. While the 2021 platform is drafted in consultation with the city's advocacy firms and anticipates major legislative priorities for the coming year, council may wish to expand the priorities in the platform. As such, staff seeks further direction to include any additional policy statements and recommends council approval of the 2021 legislative platform. That concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions? Yes, Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Christine, compliment, I'd like that we put it in there regarding the funding and procurement of an electric mandated vehicle fleet. I'm glad we're at the forefront, so kudos to you. Thank you for putting that in there. My next question is, if you can point out in the report, maybe I missed it. I looked for it three times, but maybe my eyes aren't as good as your eyes. Where does it say that we're also continuing to support funding for our schools? I didn't see it in the report, it was there last year. And I just want to make sure you point it out to me because you're the author of this great report.
Vice Mayor Frutos, it was not explicitly pointed out in the report because it was not changed or it was, it was not an addition from the last version of the legislative platform. So the staff report.
What I'm worried, because it's not spelled out and the council's taking an action tonight, I'd like to see it physically spelled out that we're pulling our resources to, you know, support funding from Sacramento to our schools. I'd like to physically see that, I don't know if it, because it was there last year. And if it's not, if it's not in writing, it could disappear forever. So I'd like to make sure it's there. And then my second question is, when we talk about healthy communities, I was wondering how come we didn't address childcare? Has childcare seemed to be a community issue at large? I really feel that we as a city should try to seek funding to help out our families for childcare. I think that's important. And those are my two thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Frutos. So to clarify the first question regarding support for our schools. So that is still within the platform, it remains within the platform from the last version. So if I can refer you to the section on state and federal funding, if you're looking.
What page?
If you're looking at the red line version, it's page 17. And it's item number one, legislation to increase funding for Burbank. And it includes support for legislation that would increase funding for Burbank's community services, including funding for local law enforcement, community-oriented policing services, urban area security initiatives. enforcement, community-oriented policing services, urban area security initiatives, forensic science, community development block grants, public libraries, affordable housing, employment services, senior citizen and youth programs, maintenance and infrastructure improvements, public schools, and park and open space development, among others. So it is-
Got it.
-part of the statement in which we support community services at large.
Okay, thank you. And how about childcare funding?
And to address the second part of your statement, we can certainly add a statement to the healthy community section if council desires, something along the lines of supporting state and federal funding for, to provide childcare services or access to childcare for the community.
Okay, Madam Mayor, if I can ask you to put that question at the end of our question and answer and deliberation, I'd like to request that this question about childcare be brought to the whole council at the end of the discussion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sure. You're welcome. Yes, Councilmember Gableletti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did you call on me? I'm sorry.
I did call on you.
All right.
Yes.
I'd like a question to be asked of all colleagues as well, and this has to do with our advocating and joining other cities in advocating for alternative ways of setting speed limits in our city where we have significant other users using the right-of-way, whether by change of state law, or introduction of a pilot program, or other means to reexamine and implement an alternative way of determining enforceable speed limits. And I base this on the video that we saw a week or two ago, and the good work of the National Association of City Transportation officials who first brought this to our attention, and I further base it on legislation that Assemblymember Friedman had tried to get adopted, she was not successful, but as a result of her efforts, she was able to establish a working group that I believe is sending their report to Sacramento this year. I am so convinced that looking for a way to educate and enforce a new approach to speed limits in some of our areas is a really important thing to do, and it won't be easy, but we can start. So, Madam Mayor, when you get to the end, that's an additional item I would like introduced into the platform.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay. Yes, Councilmember Talamontes?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add something to the transportation infrastructure section, page 20, it would be under 22. The addition would, if my colleagues agree, to advocate for a stop at the downtown Burbank station by Amtrak Surfliner. I mean, we're working on that right now. We're getting close. I'd just like to make sure we mention it here in what we want to do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Murphy? You're muted.
There's a paragraph at the end of page four that talks about alternative ways to set speed limits in the City of Burbank. It seems to be following our discussion from the 13th of this year. I'm wondering about renewable energy. It seems to me that remarks from our new, our president-elect, that he's interested in investing in renewables and having new jobs in that area, and here we have a state that every summer, we have wildfires, and I see that there's some protection from wildfires, but, but we also need to take a look at our power production and make sure that those sources are safe, that they're built in such a way that, you know, brush is cleared and there's enough space that we don't have these horrible fires every year. So it's, it's kind of touched on, but it, it doesn't seem to me to, to be inclusive enough, and to the extent that we can also focus on renewables and jobs from renewables, I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a few. I, also, under healthy communities, I would like to add, support state and federal legislation for affordable healthcare. On page nine, under housing, if you all would please consider adding language in store, in support of state and federal legislation to keep people in their homes, homeowners, keep ownership of small investors in their duplexes, fourplexes, sixplexers, their small properties, and also support for rental subsidies for our tenants, and that residents are always, are always prioritized over institutional investors, so that we keep people housed at all levels, tenants, owners, mom and pops. And also, if we could consider changing the language on page 18, community values balance with environmental needs, maybe pursue state and federal, state and federal legislation that prior, prioritizes environment, the environment, environment and balances the needs of the community. I feel like language that prioritizes the, the environment, because I feel like that is a value of our community. We can consider that. And also, if we could add a section for equity, since, you know, we've had the red, the anti-prejudice resolution focused on inclusivity, like we support equitable access, support legislation and funding that helps the City of Burbank provide residents with equitable access to city programs and services, i.e. the PASS program. Eliminating, eliminating barriers, support legislation and funding that will allow the city and its community partners to provide disadvantaged residents with the tools necessary to grow and thrive, i.e. literacy programs at the library, BTAC, Essentia, FSA, et cetera. Community engagement, support legislation and funding for the city and its community partners to proactively engage with residents on issues of prejudice, discrimination, and social justice to promote education, understanding, expanded opportunity, and acceptance between diverse groups in the community, making all feel welcome and safe in Burbank. BHRC, PD Roadmap, et cetera. So that way, we've, well, we'll have, eventually have covered it all, like it will be in our legislative platform. So if we could please consider those also as additions. Okay.
Mayor Springer, if I may provide some comments?
Yes, thank you.
Just to respond to council's comments in inverse order, if you don't mind. So to clarify, you are requesting the addition of a new section on social justice and equity, covering equitable access, the elimination of barriers that would lead to economic disparities and educational gaps, and support for community engagement. And as for the statement on page 18, in the Sustainability Section regarding balancing community values with environmental needs, you are requesting that we amend the statement, pursue state and federal environmental legislation that balances the needs of the environment, replacing balances the needs with prioritizing the needs of the environment. Correct? And-
Prioritizing the, the environment while-
Prioritizing the environment.
Yeah, while filling the needs of the community.
And as for the two statements on property ownership and rental subsidies, do recommend that we clarify those statements to something along the lines of support of state and federal legislation to protect property ownership for single-family and small multifamily property owners, and to support state and federal funding for rental assistance programs.
Yes, and prioritize residents over institutional investors.
And as for the access to affordable healthcare, I suggest clarifying and expanding the statement to something along the lines of support for legislation that creates options and opportunities for access to affordable healthcare. And Councilmember Murphy, to address your two statements regarding renewable energy and fire mitigation, for the, the first issue, the energy section does support legislation that allows flexibility to choose which resources reliably and best fit the city's need to meet our energy goals in a cost-effective manner. So if it is council's wish, we could emphasize renewable energy in the statement. So promote legislation that allows flexibility to choose which resources reliably and best fit the city's needs with an emphasis or prioritization of the use of renewable resources to meet energy goals in a cost-effective manner. And as for fire mitigation, I know that you mentioned responsible and power management, so we could include a statement in the platform regarding support for legislation that promotes the prevention and mitigation of wildfires by promoting or mandating responsible power management, to keep that, that statement a little bit broad. And we can certainly add Councilmember Talamontes's recommendation for, to advocate for a stop at the downtown Burbank Metrolink Station for the Amtrak Surfliner, as well as Councilmember Gableletti's recommendation for support for alternate methods to set enforceable speed limits in the City of Burbank. So I counted, and yes, as previously addressed, Vice Mayor Frutos's recommendation to support state and federal funding to increase access to childcare for the community.
Thank you. So, everything's covered, colleagues? Yes, Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes, I've got a question to Christine. Christine, on page nine, under housing, number, number nine, limitations on accessory dwelling units, does, does any of this contradict what we just approved of the agenda item prior?
I will defer to City Attorney Amy Albano.
Thank you. So, I'm, sorry, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and let me, please, give me one second, I will put my video back on. There we go. Thank you. The ADU law is what it is, and we're supposed to be following it, but this is our legislative platform, so I think it's totally appropriate for the council to continue to advocate for these things, and let the legislature know that we still want these items, and especially given the fact that, like, the owner occupancy requirements are supposed to go back into effect in 2025, and we want to make sure that we continue to advocate that those be allowed to go back into effect in 2025, if not sooner. So I think it's totally appropriate for the council to take this position in the legislative platform and still appropriately enact an ordinance that's compatible and in conformance with state law.
Okay, the one sent, the one sentence that I had kind of trouble with, where it says, "Result in ADUs and junior ADUs that are appropriate in scale to the existing single-family home and surrounding neighborhood." We don't have anything in our ordinance, or anything that we just approved, that says anything about surrounding neighborhood, do we?
No, because we're really, they have to be more objective development standards, and they're set out in the ordinance, so it's really, and if you'll, if you think about some of the stuff that the council's done, is to take, take ourselves to more objective standards, I do believe, and I don't want to misspeak, so maybe we should come back with this and have CDD weigh in, but I believe that there is something in the ordinance that does allow us to look at, that it conforms with what the original house sort of looks like, so that we're not building something that's brand-new, modern versus, say, Cape Cod, but I'd have to double-check. I thought there was something in it, and I'm sorry, I, I can't swear to that, but for some reason, that rings a bell in my mind.
Well, it's just like Councilmember Gableletti's example, which she brought up, she asked the question of an existing 850-square-foot home-
Right.
-you can put on 850-foot, square feet.
Well, and so again, the legislative platform is advocating what the council would like to see. So we know very well that the council did not feel that the new state law was, met your, the council's expectations and desires for what ADU should and shouldn't be. You still adopted it in ordinance because we had no choice under state law, but it doesn't mean that you can't advocate for what you believe to be correct, in your opinion, so that-
Okay. I just don't want to go against state law, I mean, we already have a state law-
Well, we are-
-we're putting, putting something here that we want something different.
I, I think it's a safety net for us. You know, if it starts to all fall apart, and our ADUs and our neighborhoods are just really damaged by it, then we don't want that. We've committed to-
No, no, we don't want that. I don't want it either, Madam Mayor. So, that's fine, let's leave it in. I just, raising the question-
Sure, no, good. Thank you.
City Attorney has weighed in, I appreciate, thank you very much for the time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I, I actually have a question, too. What's meant by workforce housing? Is that middle-income housing? Middle-class housing? It's on number two on workforce housing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Where, where are you seeing this?
It's on page nine, on the same page for housing. We support workforce housing, and-
Oh, okay.
So I'm just wondering, what, what is the definition of workforce housing?
I don't know if CDD, is CDD here to address it?
If I could take a little shot at it, I'm not going to be perfect, but it's basically what our workforce, what our current workforce can afford. So, based on our jobs, et cetera, we're, we're trying to allow for people that work here to be able to live here, so that's what I would say is workforce housing.
And if, if I may, Madam Mayor, I would add the, the sort of classic definition of workforce housing, you know, it's, it's a percentage of area median income, so it's my understanding that workforce housing is between 120 and 160% of median income. We in Burbank have looked at our local median income, and I think we've come up with something like $87,000 per household, whereas the county is- like $87,000 per household, whereas the county is lower. But it's, the classic definition is a percentage of median income. So whatever 120 to 160% of median income is, that identifies the affordability level of what's considered workforce housing.
Thank you. Yes.
If I may, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor, to sort of expand on what both the city manager and Councilmember Gable Letty said is, that, Councilmember Gable Letty's correct, we did go through an exercise a few years ago where we looked at what our income levels really were, and what the council saw at that time is that even moderate income doesn't necessarily, maybe lower than what some of our workforce affordability would need to be. And at that time, the council was talking about and wanted to support the ability of the city to have that category. And as you know, most of the state and federal affordability guidelines don't take into that consideration. It's not that finite, finitely broken down. And so I also feel that the workforce housing one was also the council saying, "We support affordable, but we'd also like to see the ability of, for all, housing for all levels of affordability in the city, including Burbank's workforce." And that's why I believe this might have been the result of that discussion a few years ago as well.
Thank you. So we need a motion, I guess, to move forward with all the changes? Okay. So do I have a motion?
And you could do a motion that just says you approved the city Burbank legislative platform as, with the amendments as explained by Mrs. Alex a few minutes ago.
Yes, Councilmember Murphy.
What she said, I move.
Okay, is there a second? Yes, Vice Mayor Frutos.
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Gable Letty?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontis?
Yes.
Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next report is for consideration to write a letter to the city of L.A. regarding the Griffith Park Aerial Transit Study. Will Assistant Transportation Planner Chris Bonomo please present the report?
Good evening, Mayor Springer, and members of council.
My name is Chris Bonomo.
I'm an Assistant Transportation Planner in the Community Development Department. Staff have a brief recorded PowerPoint regarding the Griffith Park Aerial Transit System. That will play, and that staff will be available for questions.
... on the quality of life and equestrian activities in the Rancho District, and consideration to write a letter in response to the project.
Oh, God!
Tonight, I will present on the Griffith Park Aerial Transit Study its potential impacts on the city and a recommendation on next steps. I will provide staff recommendation, background on the project, and show the proposed alignments. Then I will outline possible impacts and the conclusion. Finally, I'll be glad to take your questions at the end. Staff recommendation is for council to direct staff on whether or not to draft a letter to the city of Los Angeles in response to the Griffith Park Aerial Transit Project. The Griffith Park Aerial Transit Study is a feasibility study of a proposed closed-loop gondola system to serve the Hollywood Sign area in Griffith Park. The goal of the feasibility study is to determine if an aerial transit system would streamline tourist access to the Hollywood Sign, decrease traffic congestion in surrounding neighborhoods, ease parking constraints in the park, and to identify any preliminary environmental Should the feasibility study demonstrate that the project's goals could be achieved and that there is community support, the project could potentially move forward to acquiring funding for design and construction. At this time, the city of Los Angeles only has funding for a feasibility study. There are no funds budgeted for design and/or construction. There are four different proposed routes being studied, three of which would originate from public parkland, and one which originates at Warner Brothers Studios. Two routes originate from the area around the zoo, while the other two originate near the northern boundary. Trip time for each route is between six and 13 minutes, with each terminating at a viewing platform below the Hollywood Sign. All routes utilize existing parking. Route four from the Warner Brothers property along Forest Lawn Drive in the city of Los Angeles would require further study, since it was proposed after routes one, two, and three had undergone initial analysis. Given that this is a feasibility study and that the final version is still in development, the major details are still to be determined, including the preferred route or routes, timing, and pricing. However, given the information available, staff does not foresee any direct effect to the city of Burbank or the Rancho neighborhood should the possible project receive additional funding for construction. Parking and operations for three of the four routes are currently planned to be located entirely within the boundaries of Griffith Park. Route four would originate from Warner Brothers' private property, but the parcel is located in the city of Los Angeles. For all four routes of the proposed tram, operations will be contained on the Los Angeles side of the 134 freeway. The alignment map notes that Route one may result in the loss of Martinez Arena. Since this is still only a feasibility study, there is no further detail on what that actually entails. The project could have an indirect effect on Burbank as it relates to broader issues of disturbing park open space, disrupting equestrian or hiking trails during construction, and increasing tourist usage of Griffith Park, since Griffith Park is an amenity enjoyed by Burbank residents and the Rancho equestrian community. There would be no fiscal impact should the city decide to write a letter in regard to the Griffith Park Aerial Transit Study. In conclusion, the next steps will be to monitor for future opportunities for public engagement, which are anticipated to be later this month and in December, as well as for the estimated study publication in January. Staff recommends that council provide further direction to staff on whether or not to draft a letter to the city of Los Angeles in response to the Griffith Park Aerial Transit Project. With that, we'll be glad to take your questions regarding the feasibility study. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Vice Mayor Frutos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the staff, I was wondering how come the report, or in the step one, did not include any advisements to the council for their consideration on the impacts to the residents in Burbank that, you know, I've gotten accustomed to their access to the park?
Um, thank you for the question. As of now, the aerial transit feasibility study is still just that, a feasibility study. It is not yet published. It goes live in January, so we've been told. There may be further detail that would give us a better idea of exactly what the impacts may be, what the preferred routes are, but at this point in time, we just know that there are four routes, there are four rough areas where they start and end. Should it move forward, we would certainly have more information to provide. When the document goes live in January, we would certainly have a better idea of what the harder details are for the project, or for the feasibility study.
Not to disagree to disagree with you, but in listening to the residents that have contacted me as I put this step forward, there's a lot of information that they have that, again, if this moves forward and if the council agrees to the direction, some of the Rancho long-term community members that have been watching this idea from infancy to now, they are well aware of the impacts to Burbank, and including a horse arena that will be taken away, including a access to a hiking trail. So this really goes back to the quality of life for the Rancho members of our city and that community and that part of town. So I wish the report contained input from people that are very passionate that we all five represent. Those are my thoughts. I'll let the other council members weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Frutos. Yes, Councilmember Talamontis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the report. You know, and I want to extend a thank you to Ms. Nori Walla. She sent us a lot of information. I want to thank you, Ms. Walla, for providing that information to all the council. I know you and I had a long conversation, about almost an hour, regarding this issue. And I did reach out to a couple of council members in Glendale, and they said they hadn't heard much of it from their residents. And one of the, one of the statements that was made to me by one of the council members, and that was because of the fact that, typically, everything that is being proposed, proposed in the feasibility study, is in L.A. proper. It's not in Glendale, it's not in Burbank, it's all being done in L.A. I know it affects some of our, and like, we had a long talk in regards to the effect that that could have to our riders, to our residents here in Burbank, to the residents in Glendale, and to a lot of the other residents. I mean, riders that don't even live in Burbank. They board their horses here and live outside the city. But nonetheless, they are riders, they enjoy the Griffith Park horse trails. And having said that, I, you know, the feasibility study is progressing, there's no funding, you know, that's going to be the big item, the funding portion of things. And once they, once they, they let us, they let the public see the feasibility study, and that's more or less what they're thinking, what they're proposing, that'll give us more of an idea of what, what's going to be the effect here for our residents, especially the Rancho community. But I wouldn't be, I would be opposed to sending a letter, and not so much opposing the project, but just maybe stating that, make sure that you take Burbank Rancho area into consideration when you're talking about this. Take us into consideration, take our residents into consideration, take all the riders that enjoy the Griffith Park hillside for their horses, and just their quality of life issues. Hikers that do a lot of hiking there, and the Martinez horse area that's going to be taken up, apparently, that's going to be, that's being proposed as a parking area. So that'll go away, which, which I know the riders, and I know Councilmember Gable Letty is more aware of this than I am, but they love those areas. And I think, I think we should, if we are, if we are going to write a letter to the mayor, to our new council member that's going to be taking over, Councilman Rue has lost the election, so there'll be a new council member over there in that district, District Four, I believe it is, for L.A. City. You know, we can also, I know Senator Portantino has already written a letter of his concerns and the fact that it's affecting his constituents. I'd like to see, reach out to Assemblymember Friedman, and also Senator Hertzberg to weigh in on this. So, you know, just having said that, I just have to be, let's be cautious with the letter. And I think the gist of our letter should be to take Burbank into consideration and its residents and of the Rancho area as they proceed with what they're proceeding with. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Gable Letty?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Brono, well, how do you pronounce your name?
Bonomo.
Bonomo, okay.
That was perfect, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate your report. I was a little surprised that the written report concluded no impacts, and I think you've already heard and you've updated your presentation to reflect a little more of the nature of the community on the north side of the park. With that in mind, I'd like to suggest that we send a letter that we, in fact, educate L.A. to what is on the north side of the park. I can give you very specific reasons why this is a very serious issue for us, for our residents who live in this part of the city. But I'm going to skip over that because I think you all are pretty familiar with the area, and you've at least seen the locations. Martinez Arena is the only public arena that is available to residents of Burbank and Glendale who keep their horses at home. It's the only place they can go to exercise them, ride them, have training classes, and do other kinds of outdoor things. So considering that, we also have more recently taken a position that horses are users and are public right-of-way, I think that in fact there is an impact. And so I'd like to suggest language like this, and you've already seen it, but I think it's good. Due to the fact that the northern rim of Griffith Park forms the southern boundary of the city of Burbank, our city, and in particular, our equestrian neighborhood, have been regularly riding the trails of Griffith Park for well over 100 years. I don't think that the current feasibility study has taken that into consideration at all. Our proximity to and use of Griffith Park has resulted in an extensive history of land use and zoning related to residential and commercial horsekeeping in our equestrian community, and there's a basis for which this community continues to thrive to this day. Any overhead tram gondolas located on or near the existing horse trails in the park will cause a significant negative and direct impact to the use of those trails by equestrians as the overhead gondolas present a substantial risk to public safety due to the nature of horses as prey animals, which would spin, bolt, and gallop away when frightened by a predator. An overhead gondola traveling only a few feet above a horse is a predator in the mind of the horse. And I know, Vice Mayor Frutos and I know this intimately, because he's also had the experience of riding, and he's a very good rider. Thus, any trails impacted by overhead gondolas crossing over the trail or traveling next to the trail will render these trails unusable by equestrians. Route one in particular, the most devastating to our Rancho community, as it eliminates equestrian use, our most, most of our, quote, "equestrian transit hub," which starts at the Mariposa Bridge, and that is the only way to Griffith Park, as you know, it is the only way to ride to the park, continues through the tunnels. These tunnels are dedicated equestrian easements when the freeway was built, to accommodate the continuation of that path, under the freeway into Martinez Arena and through the Oak Canyon Trail. Oak Canyon is the main trail for the rental stables, for the, it's the primarily used trail to get up into the other trails in Griffith Park. The base of the tram in this route is at the base of Oak Canyon Trail, and when I looked at the map, I will tell you, it is smack dab in the middle of the trail, across the street from Travel Town. And the route is going up Oak Canyon Trail, thus eliminating the most widely-used intersection of our equestrian transit hub. As access to trails, safe riding on the trails, and much treasured open space is no longer available to equestrians in the park, our communities will disappear as there will be no viable way to keep a horse in the city of Burbank without a place to ride in the park. I think a letter, Councilmember Talamontis, that educates the Parks Department and L.A. city staff, and we could close the letter by saying, you know, we, I would like to say that we did not get any direct contact from the consultants who are preparing this feasibility study. I would like to also say that as far as we know, Glendale didn't receive any contact. I talked to one council member, and she didn't know about it. It doesn't surprise me that the residents of Glendale didn't. It doesn't surprise me that the residents of Glendale didn't really get included. And so I would like to say something about that. And in the, and in the absence of that direct contact and communication, we would, we would like the Parks Department and the city of L.A. to know we have these concerns, and this is why, and then include those points in the letter. For further information, contact Mayor Sharon Springer, Vice Mayor Bob Frutos, put in a phone number. That is the kind of letter that I think would make the point, make it clear, have us take a position, and maybe most importantly, advise them that, hey, they never talked to us. I did talk to David, Councilmember Rue, about this, but, you know, the contact wasn't initiated by the outreach from the consultant team. So, and then finally, I might say in this letter that please note that this is a high fire, high severity fire area, whatever that word is, as designated on the city of L.A.'s own maps, not Burbank's, but the city of Los Angeles. So I think fire, our neighborhoods, the lack of any kind of direct outreach are points that we can make in the letter without being angry or, you know, just on the record. Will it get built? I don't know, but I think we should be on the record.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
It's a motion.
Okay, Councilmember Murphy.
One, one quick, I just wanted to clarify one thing. Over the course of researching for this staff report, we did get in touch with the project management team from Los Angeles, so we now have a direct line to their project management.
And you had to do the outreach.
Exactly.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy.
Yeah, I don't do a lot of riding on horses. I would feel sorry for them if they had to carry me very far, not that they couldn't. But I'm in Griffith Park almost every weekend, and sometimes, I was there today with my dogs. You see a lot of people walking. I see horses all the way down to the Autry Museum on the trails. I see a lot of them going up into the hills before the zoo. And my understanding is we're working on a bike lane that's going to go around on the other side of Forest Lawn and go towards Barham. So we also have bikers. You know, we don't have a dog park in the city yet. We're going to have one, but I mean, a lot of, you see a lot of dogs. Griffith Park is a treasure. You know, it's our central park. And I'd just like to read a couple of paragraphs from the Griffith Park Charitable Trust and what they said, and personally, I'm opposed to this gondola thing completely. I mean, this is for, you know, people that want to take a picture of the Hollywood sign. There's a million ways to take a picture of the Hollywood sign, and you know, if you want to see it so bad, you should walk. But here's what the Griffith Park Trust said. Griffith Park is not just any city park, it is unique in that it is really two parks in one. The section with man-made revenue structures in the lower regions and the wilderness core in the upper regions. The hilly sometimes steep undeveloped wild natural areas is at its center. The natural chaparral landscape component is the main reason why the trust objects to any arable tram, gondola transport system, taking people to the park to the Hollywood sign, just for the benefit of taking a selfie. The urban wilderness ecosystem is fragile as well as unique, meaning that it is the only city park with certain rare plants not found anywhere else in Los Angeles, along with abundant wildlife, including B-22. I mean, B-22 feels like, you know, it belongs to all of us. We've watched him grow and move around, and, you know, we're concerned about him. So, you know, it's more than just for horses and equestrian, it's for everybody in Burbank and Glendale to use, and I'm opposed to it. I can see why I might be coming on too strong at this point, and I'm willing to, you know, go along with a letter opposing the route that would take away the Martinez ring, but I just think it's a bad, bad idea in general. It's not good for Griffith Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gable Letty, did you have a comment?
You know, Councilmember Murphy, you're 100% right. The wilderness values of the park are really our front door where Burbank touches Los Angeles. And I have a very strong objection to this too, especially after reading about the high fire hazard area. I can't imagine constructing this kind of thing in an area that's designated as high fire hazard. I also am very troubled by this particular route being readily visible from Forest Lawn and Mount Sinai. I was at Mount Sinai for a service about four weeks ago, and this was after Vice Mayor asked if this come back to council, and I couldn't imagine how the sanctity of services and funerals and visiting your lost ones and leaving flowers and spending a quiet moment could be violated by looking up and seeing a bunch of gondolas swinging up to the Hollywood sign. But I think we have the foundations for a letter that could go to council, and maybe the staff could take a look at the quotes that you were reading and see if there's something that also reflects the wilderness values and that the city of L.A. should be mindful of that also. So I would say that would be an amendment to the motion.
Okay, I just have a comment, some comments. I support the Rancho neighborhood and our equestrians, but I'm with Councilmember Murphy. I just oppose it. I just feel like it's a theme park ride over, you know, a wonderful public amenity. I've jogged these trails and been on a bike through some of them, and I can't imagine, you know, having gondolas whirring overhead and that it should be protected against a theme park ride. And one letter we received said that it was, it was put forth as a transportation, a traffic mitigation project, but that this person agreed it's not real. You know, it's, it is kind of a theme park ride. So I agree with the letter, and so that motion was made by Councilmember Gable Letty and seconded by Jess Talamontes. Yes, Mr. Hess.
Madam Mayor, just one quick detail before you vote. Did you want that? Is the council good with all of you signing it, or would you prefer just on behalf of the council for the mayor to sign, just so?
Yeah, I think it has more impact if we all sign, right? Okay, yes. Okay, we'll all sign it. Yes, Councilmember Gable Letty?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry?
No, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, sorry.
My sense, I have to check in with Councilmember Talamontes on this. We can, we can write a letter in opposition, we just don't have to be hostile about it, right?
I agree, I agree. You know, I just.
I think we got at least five votes to say we would like to, we would like to go on record as opposing it. We're just not going to attack them all, we're just going to lay it out and say why.
And, and we know why they're doing it. Obviously, they're trying to listen to their residents that are being impacted by all those visitors, right? I mean, I've seen the cars when they're parked, double parked, and all that kind of stuff. And the residents in that area on the other side, because there are the streets that lead up to the sign, they're just fed up. And, you know, and the council is listening to their constituents, but don't, don't put it on us, you know what I mean? Don't find it problems, don't solve your problems on our back. But no, I agree, I agree.
Okay, so I think we have, Madam Mayor, I think there's consensus to make the letter a letter of opposition, just not to.
Right, we'll be polite about it.
Yeah, use the carrot and not the stick at first.
Okay, so we need a vote?
Madam Mayor, just for a point of clarity, I just wanted to ask, should it be council's desire? Staff is happy to write a letter directed to the city of Los Angeles Recreation and Parks Department outlining the following points. And if I could just summarize, it's the history of Burbank and Burbank's Rancho neighborhood, the importance of neighborhoods in Burbank, a need for greater outreach in Burbank and Glendale, concerns of high fire risk areas, and that trails should be preserved for all people and wildlife. And staff is happy to draft and write that letter and to get council signatures and then pass that along to the city of Los Angeles if that should be council's desire.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I, if I may ask a small request, is that when the letter's done, that we reach out to the mayor of Glendale and advise them the position that we've taken so they're aware? Because if nobody reached out to them, obviously, they don't know it's on the radar, but I'd like to be able to at least let them know what we're doing, because they might want to also take a position that's up to them.
Yeah, I shared their concerns with them, so a couple of their council members are aware of it. And they just told me what I was told, that they hadn't heard anything from the residents.
Yeah, I know when I spoke to Councilmember Rue's field deputy about the issue moving forward, she basically said she was unaware that Burbank wasn't supportive of it. And I said, well, nobody's reached out to the neighborhood that's going to be impacted, but they're definitely, you know, they're following the protocol, they're reaching out to their elected officials to, you know, let them convey to a fellow council member that the people in Burbank in the Rancho are not supportive of this and how it's going to impact. But she was really unaware, so maybe that's also happening in Glendale. I'm not going to, you know, speak on their behalf, but I just would like them to get a copy of our letter, at least to the mayor, so the mayor's aware of our position and what we sent to L.A. Thank you.
Councilmember Gable Letty, real quick, Madam Mayor, can I ask?
Sure, yes.
The maker of the motion, would you be against CCing the various elected officials that I mentioned, like Laura Friedman? I know Senator Portantino's already weighed in, let's have Assemblymember Friedman, Senator Hertzberg.
Not at all. I would, first, I'd like the letter to go to David Rue's office.
Yeah.
And then it'd be CCed to Mike Schul and Recreation and Parks, because we're council, he's council, and it probably should be CCed to Nithia Ramen, who is the.
Incoming.
She's the assumed new.
Councilmember elect.
Although their election isn't final either, so everybody's waiting, but it seems like it should be council member-elect as a courtesy. And then, of course, Hertzberg, Friedman, and Portantino, and Mayor Glendale.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Gable Letty?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
And Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is the time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Who'd like to start? Yes, Vice Mayor Frutos, thank you.
I'll start. Going back to Thursday, October the 29th, I attended via Zoom a justice and recovery, a conversation with Assemblymember Laura Friedman and the YWCA of Glendale, CEO Tara Peterson. And I really liked to extend a thank you for our Assemblymember for really being engaged and discussing these issues and how we're moving forward, especially after COVID-19, how we're going to get our city back to normality, which is what the residents want. Then on November the 2nd, I attended with the mayor the ribbon cutting, and we did it social distance for the CTN Cartoon Network event, that we, we just did it in front of the hotel there, but it was via Zoom. And it was pretty interesting on how many people attend this conference. And what she explained to the mayor and I, and Councilmember Gable Letty, and Councilmember Tim Murphy, was that the CTN, this Cartoony Network event every year, especially with COVID-19, how many people in the animation field really haven't been affected as far as their employment, because they're just doing it at home now. And with the computer technology, they're happily employed, and other people are trying to learn about the business, so this was a really good event. I was glad to be supporting it. And then November the 5th, I attended the CDD online community meeting regarding the city's greenhouse reduction plan update via Zoom. And then at, and my last final one is I just wanted to thank all the veterans, even though I'm kind of bummed out that we're not having our annual support that we do and acknowledge our veterans, but I wanted to thank them for their sacrifices in serving our country in all foreign and domestic wars and issues. And I thank you for my freedom. I thank you for giving me the ability to be on council and what you have done for this country. Thank you to all the veterans. I'll be thinking about you tomorrow on Veterans Day. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gable Letty?
I certainly join Vice Mayor Frutos in recognizing and thanking the veterans in our country, men and women, who have served and kept us a free country. I attended the film, filming of the ribbon cutting for the Creative Talent Network on November 2nd. And the amazing thing to me was that Tina Price, who started this, started with maybe 200 people, and today there are 10,000 attending the Creative Talent Network.
Wow.
It's phenomenal. And I have always admired her ability, she really is a woman achiever, to just make this incredibly successful. And each one of you, when you've served as mayor, have had the honor of going or cutting the ribbon or meeting and being part of it. It is quite an extraordinary happening, and I look forward to a post-COVID CTN. The only other thing was on Thursday, November 5th, I found out a week after it happened that I broke my foot, so I missed the SCAG meeting, but I made the Arroyo Verdugo Community Joint Powers Authority meeting and introduced the members there to the idea of the 85th percentile for speed calculation was really 95 years old, way out of date. We need an alternative solution. And Dan Brotonman from Glendale said that he, he thought maybe that we cities, maybe through Arroyo Verdugo, maybe through the COG in the San Fernando Valley, should gang up together and see if we can, as a group, this is going to be a very, very heavy lift, as Mr. Berkman made us very aware. But hey, there's an opportunity there to change the paradigm. That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Talamontes?
Madam Mayor, just a few items. You and I participated in an I-5 self-committee meeting with a, with a city manager, assistant city manager, and CDD staff. I also attended the San Fernando Valley Service Council. I attended the SCAG Transportation Committee meeting that my colleague, Councilmember Gable Letty, missed. You have a broken foot? Is that what it was? Anyway, so I also want to thank all the, all of our veterans that have maintained our country, that say that it has been protecting us, and, you know, words can't thank you enough. But happy Veterans Day, everybody. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Thank you. I also attended the Zoom meeting for justice and recovery. I also attended the Zoom meeting for justice and recovery, chaired by Laura Friedman and also from a very knowledgeable young lady from the YWCA about domestic violence. I also attended the ribbon cutting for CTN. And even though we're not going to have our normal Veterans Day events, I'd like to remind everybody that 11 o'clock, whether you're in your house or at work, if you go outside, the Cusomano family has generously sponsored a flyover by the Condor Squadron, and it's, it's a nice thing to see. So check it out tomorrow at 11:00. Thank you.
Thank you. I continued my meetings with local businesses, and so I met with Disney, Warner Brothers, and Providence St. Joe's. And some productions are getting back underway with Disney and Warner Brothers. And the actors and workers have to be tested several times a week. And for example, Warner Brothers is using 66 labs to do that. And I, with Providence St. Joe's, I just want to stress the importance of not letting down our guards over the holidays for COVID-19, because there's just a lot of concern that the gatherings are going to spike the positivity rates. And I met with Burbank Chamber young professionals, and they're very interested in moving forward our sustainability goals. And I feel like our green, I told them about the Green Choice Program of BWP, and I also brought up the Green Choice Program in my mayor's show. And that's a program that BWP, for about $6 to $10 more a month, they will go out and buy renewable energy credits to offset your residential fossil fuel use. So it moves us closer to reaching our renewable energy goals. I recommend that everybody sign up for that. And I, it was nice to be with you at the Creative Talent Network ribbon cutting. It's been a long time cutting a ribbon. And I attended the Arroyo Verdugo Joint Powers meeting where we approved the strategic plan for expenditure of Measure M funds with just a few tweaks. And I attended the PFLAG meeting last night, and they were, I reported out on the proclamation that I read tonight, and they're very grateful for that. And so that does it for me. So let's move on to additional agenda items. Yes, Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to ask for a one-step, two-step for council consideration for discussion. I'd like to review our campaign funds policy. And specifically is when we're helping somebody that can't pay the fees, I'd like to revisit that in a discussion on a one-step, two-step. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Yes, I'd like to agendize the actions to consider, discuss tonight by the BHRC presentation by Mrs. Ramos. First of all, that we partner with BHRC on 2021 Community Dialogues. Second of all, that we assist with the campaign to make announcements about the program and also condemning hate. She mentions bumper stickers and public service announcements, that we incorporate a section on human relations in the youth leadership program, and that we adopt a sundown town resolution as well. That's number one. Number two, there's a new program that's kind of sweeping the nation. It's called Cities for CDOW. CDOW is the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women. I think that that's something that we would all be for. The women in America have advantages over a lot of other countries, but still, there's a lot of room for improvement. Apparently, this convention was asking countries to ratify it, and to this date, 187 countries out of 193 have ratified it. The United States has not. And the United States is now in the company of Iran, Sudan, Somalia, Palau, and Tonga, which have not ratified it. So it's supposed to be ratified by the Senate, and apparently it's being blocked by somebody. I guess there's one particular senator that's so powerful that they can't do their business unless he says it's okay. So they're asking that cities across the country reach out and indicate that they support CDOW. And the organizations in our city that are asking for this is the Zonta Club and the Zonta Club in the United States, the National Federation of Business and Professional Women, Seroptimus International, and the International Bill of Rights for Women. So I would like to see us do that, and I'd ask that it be made an agenda item in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Talamontis?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I don't, I don't have agenda items per se. I'd just like to make a couple of comments. One to the city court, I've seen a lot of signs still from the election that are out there for the, from the local election, the Burbank election. So I'd just like to suggest to the city court to maybe get in touch with the different campaigns and remind them to please pick up their signs. And the other thing is I'd like to mention to the community, Parks and Recreation is having a Vision for Parks, virtual community workshops that are scheduled this coming Thursday and Saturday and Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. So please, I'd like to encourage the residents to participate in this Vision for Parks. It's time, it's your time to weigh in and contribute to the future of our park system. Thank you very much, Madam.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay. We now adjourn in memory of former Burbank Fire Chief Curtis Reynolds to Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, at 6:00 PM for a regular meeting through an online meeting process. The public may view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways. By leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, by emailing the city council directly at citycouncil@burbankca.gov, by calling indirectly to the council at 818-238-3335. I forgot to give you the website, it's burbankca.gov/ecomments. Okay? Thank you, and have a good night.